Meeting to order, and I'd like to say I thank everyone that's in the audience that's going to participate this afternoon. And thank each audience for coming out and thanking those that are online that's watching us. And we were a little bit late this afternoon, but it was a wonderful opening of the new Food City, which was a great investment for Dickinson County. And we expect a lot of revenue from it, and we expect a lot of employees. I think they've got 70 new employees at the store today, so that's wonderful, that 70 more people got employed in the field. So we're down, we had our...
We'll need to re- re-adjourn.
Okay, we just need to, we recessed, so now we need to adjourn back in session.
Move in a second.
I need to move in a second, that we adjourned back to our business meeting from recess. We recessed from the business over there.
I'll make that motion that we re-convene back here at the DeSar Building.
I'll say it.
A motion and a second, Mrs. Sloss, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Thacker?
Yes.
And Ms. Kaiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Hall?
Yes.
And also. And we've already done our pledge and our prayer down at the Food City building, so we're ready to approve the minutes from our public hearing of January the 23rd and January the 23rd regular meeting. Is there any question or concern about the minutes? If not, we need a motion to accept those and approve them.
Oh, my goodness.
I have a motion.
I'll say it.
And Chris, second it. A motion and a second to approve the public hearing of January 23rd and the regular meeting of January 23rd of 2024. So Ms. Sloss, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Thacker?
Yes.
Ms. Kaiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Hall?
Yes.
And also. And we need to approve the agenda, and I think we need to...
Madam Chair, I have a change.
Okay, yeah.
You may have a change, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
If we could remove item 9E from the agenda?
9E?
And let's add an item 11B1 under section 2.2, 3711A8, consultation with legal counsel. And then also, Madam Chair, if we could, when Mr. Rowland Cooch presents from Davenport Company, we're going to be adopting the financial policy guidelines on number 8. If we can make after Davenport Company, if we can make that adoption of financial policy guidelines out of A, and if we can make an item B under that for appointment of a board member to the investments committee?
Hold on just a second, Larry. Adoption of the financial report?
That'll be A, and then if we could put a B under that, appointment of board member to finan- to investment committee?
And then we'll have a B?
Uh huh. Appointment of board member to investments committee as part of the policy there to revise.
Is there anyone needs to add anything to the agenda, or? If not, we need an approval to adopt the agenda with the additions of A and B on number 8, and delete number E, and add consultation with legal counsel on the closed session.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to...
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaiser?
Uh, aye.
Ms. Kaiser, sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
And Ms. Sloss?
Yes.
And also. Okay, now we're down to number four then. The approval of consent agenda approval. And do we also need to add the legal services as well, sir?
No, not one of them.
Do you want to approve all of them together, because we've had opportunity to look at them in our books and read them in our books, or if anyone wants to make a comment on any of them?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with A, B, you want me to approve all expenditures, B, county administrators' report, C, the drug court community work program report, D, animal control report, E, fire and rescue report, F, litter control report, G, billing official report.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Sloss, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Thacker?
Yes.
And Ms. Kaiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Hall?
Yes.
And also. Now we're down to number five, which is public comment. And I'll get our county attorney to give you the rules and regulations on public comment. And if anyone is listening, the number to call in for public comment is 276-333-0357.
And for public comments, you come to the podium, address the chairman. We have, after recognition of the chairman, there's three minutes as far as a time limit. If there's a representative of a group, you have up to five minutes to make a presentation. Speakers may not donate their time without unanimous consent of the board. Under prohibited conduct, persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity or vulgar language, use language which insults or demeans any person when directed at a public official or employee when not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualifications of public figures, make frivolous comments, engage in behavior that intimidates others, address the board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, or affairs of...
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Anyone have public comment to make?
I'll come up tonight, just talk to you, we'll give you a little report, if that's okay?
Give, I'll trace the notes, your name, give her your name and address.
My name is Terry Bartley, I'm from Hayeside, Virginia, captain of the rescue squad down there. I just wanted to give you a little heads up on what's going on with us after y'all made us the loan back a few months back. We swapped billing companies, and as of today, we haven't got a dime from Medicare or Medicaid. We've had problems with the billing company getting paperwork to Medicare and Medicaid, getting it took care of, and we still don't have it fixed as of right now. We have got a few small checks in from the other insurance companies, which is managing to keep her doors open, literally speaking. And I just wanted to give you a heads up on what's going on. If Mr. Barton could give me a call someday, I'll try to explain in detail some of it, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. They claim that hopefully this week, they're hoping to have that fixed, but I've heard that for the last two months.
You may get a big check at one time.
Well, I may do it, but I do know that they told me we had $28,000 built. If we get it, we'll be fine. If we don't, we're going to be hurt. But, you know, I want you all to know where we stand. I owe you all that, I feel.
Thank you, Terry, we appreciate it.
Mr. Bartley, just reach out to me anytime. I know we talked last week about the board meeting, just call me or I can call you.
Okay. Well, I figured it'd be better to let you call me, because you're busy.
Okay, I'll give you a call tomorrow then.
Anyone else with public comment? No calls, Adam?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Comer, state your name for the records for Teresa.
Christopher Comer, from Sand Lake. And Mr. Sturgill, I was trying to hear you the best I could, I left my hearing aids where they don't belong out in the car.
Yes, sir.
But anyway, on the rules and so forth for the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I had this on my mind, and I noticed last year, and I was talking, discussing it with my wife, this, now this, these meetings for the residents, are we allowed to ask questions or are we only allowed to make comments?
It's technically public comment period to where, to where you make comments. However, with that being said, I know questions have been asked in the past, and it's really in the direction of the chairman as far as whether, whether they can answer questions or whether it's public comment. But generally, under the rules, public comment means public comment. You've got three minutes to make your comments.
Okay.
Mr. Comer, I have been giving my board members a couple of minutes to respond after you have your three minutes. I ask them not to interrupt your three minutes.
Okay.
And then I allow them a couple of minutes to respond if they need to respond. I take them one at a time, so that everybody's not speaking at one time.
Well, I guess, from what you said, Mr. Sturgill, I would like to comment that I believe that since the residents of the county all have a part in voting each one of you in, including, you know, all of us, that, that that's probably a rule that, that needs to be considered. I don't know how long it's been in effect, if it's been that way forever or what, but I really believe that that needs to be considered to be changed. Because if you all are representing each one of the districts where we all live, we as the residents ought to be able to ask the question. I think that that ought to be in, be a part of it, you know, and then we'll go from there. But I want to abide by the rules, and that's why I'm asking you this, and that's why I brought it up.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was worthwhile, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Comer. Anyone else want to make a public comment? No one's on the line, okay. Do I need a motion to close it, or just close? I can just close public comment then, and I'll, I'll go ahead and just close it if no one else wants to speak. And next on our agenda is Dr. Christian Westover from Mountain Empire.
And I brought with me Dr. Amy Greer.
Okay.
The executive director of our foundation and our vice president for institutional advancement. So we're here to just share good news. I come about once a year and just kind of give you an update on the enrollment and how things are going. And so I think you all have a handout, and I will just kind of walk you through that if that's all right. And I apologize, we've got maybe a couple of extra around, but hopefully this will make sense to everyone. On that, not, not the very first page, because that's just the title page, but the next page where it says FY 2024 enrollment update, I'll just kind of briefly walk you through that and let you know where we are as a college and, and how we're doing in terms of Dickinson County student enrollment and graduate enrollment. So as you can see from that first page there, Mountain Empire Community College, we are actually up right now. What's important on this page is about the fifth column over where it says total FTE change percentage. And the positive there is that that's a 10% increase in enrollment in terms of our FTE. And FTE stands just for full-time enrollments. And that's calculated as, when a student takes 30 credits in a year, it, it's considered one FTE. So we are up right now, and as you can see, the VCCS is the entire system. The entire system is up just a little bit, but not quite as much as us. That's good for us when we're up and everybody else isn't quite up as much, or if they're down. There's one pot of funding, and we all, all 23 colleges share that. So if one college does well and the other colleges aren't, they usually get a bigger piece of that pie. So we're hoping this year that we will at least be held harmless in terms of budget because of that growth. The other thing that's important is our head count total. That's on the next column there, and you can see Mountain Empire, we're up about 4.51% in head count. That's that fourth column over. The VCCS is up about 3%, the same as they are in FTE. Now, why ours varies from the VCCS or from our head count? It's because what happens is we don't have as big of growth in terms of number of students coming into our college as we do students who are taking more credits. So while we have a large, we have a 4% growth in head count, our FTE growth is larger because what happens is, if you look in a couple of pages here, I'll show you, students are basically taking more credits per student. And that's a good thing, because that gets them to a degree faster, that gets them to a credential faster, and that gets them into the working world and tax-paying citizens much quickly, much more quickly. So, and I'll kind of point that out in our next, the, the next slide is really just about our fall 2023 ending numbers. You can see, just kind of a snapshot, we had 2,000 total students, a little over 2,000. About 46% of our students are full-time, and 54% are part-time. So that means most of our students are attending school and working, taking care of students, doing something else. Most, even though some of those full-time students show up as full-time, they're, they may be working full-time too. So it just, there are a lot of working students at our college. About 61% female, 38% male, and that unknown, unreported tends to grow every year. It's up to 23 students this year. Our career in technical education is about 44%. Those are those applied degrees that, that lead straight to employment. Our college transfer, those first two years of a bachelor's degree, about 17% of our students enrolled in, in that. The untelling number there is unclassified, so I wanted to unpack that for you just a little bit. Our unclassified students are really our dual enrollment students. And, and at the same percentage, about 40, 30 to 40% of those are going into career technical education programs, and about 65 to 70% of them are going into transfer. So that unclassified number of 38%, there's probably a majority of those that are high school students engaged in dual enrollment who are working on those first two years of a bachelor's degree that will go on and achieve a bachelor's degree. And then there is another smaller group of students who are in career in tech or working on something, working on a program, that they'll then come to Mountain Empire and finish up in two years. So that's kind of, just to picture a snapshot of our students this last fall, you can kind of see the fall enrollment breakdown, breakdown. I, I won't go through every major, but you can kind of see under arts and sciences how we, how our different students are engaged in, in different majors. Dual enrollment is 731 students. We kind of talked about who they are and what they're planning on doing. You'll notice probably our biggest, our biggest area in the college is health sciences. A lot of students come to Mountain Empire for, for health sciences. That's probably our biggest core group of programming. Then we also have a lot of industrial tech programs and a lot of business technology programs that are related to not only business technology, but IT and cybersecurity. This next slide, the enrollment update that has just one, it says fall 2023 point in time credit hour comparison. This is where, this is where that 10% growth in FTE is up against that 4% growth in head count and why our FTE growth is higher than our head count growth. It's because you can see there, our students take about 9.97 credit hours per semester, whereas the average student takes about eight. So to put that in perspective, 12 credit hours is considered full-time for a student. Most degrees are 60 credit hours, so it takes students four semesters to complete a degree at 15 credit hours a semester. A lot of students don't take 15, though, because they're working and, or they, they receive financial aid. And in order to be qualified for financial aid, 12 is the maximum number. So we encourage our students to take more credits so that they will finish more quickly and so that they can have that earning power throughout their life. But, and, and we're, we're gaining on that. As you can see, we grew from fall, we've increased by almost a half a credit per student because we've been sharing that information with students and encouraging them to go ahead and complete. So just the next one is, is a snapshot of right now in the spring. And of course, we won't be finalized with spring enrollment until actually the end of the spring semester, but we are up a little bit in spring enrollment right now. Our FTEs are up by about 9%, almost 9%, 8.59%. And our head count, again, is up about 4%. So again, more students are taking more credit hours per student, which is making that growth in FTE a little bit larger than our growth in head count. I can also share, it's not on these slides, but I can also share that we have a workforce component, which is what we call sometimes non-credit instruction. Those are, those are courses that lead right to an industry-recognized credential, say an AWS welding certificate, or an IT certificate, or some type of certification in IT. And that growth, we're at about 17% growth this year in those non-credit courses. So it's wonderful to be up across the board in both credit, non-credit, applied technology programs and transfer programs, and, and that's what we're looking at right now. So some of this is due to our PROMIS program, which you all heard about, and we're happy to share. And that's where Amy's going to step in. Our foundation, if you, you might not remember, but about a year ago, we made a, a big push to be able to provide free community college to any graduate within our service region. And we went to our localities, we went to different foundations. The GNAN Foundation was a big part of the big kickoff gift for that, for that program. Columbus Phipps has been a big part of funding that program here in Dickinson County. And so Amy's gonna, I'm gonna step back and let Amy kind of share a little bit about the progress of the PROMIS program and how well things are going.
Good evening, so happy to be with you all tonight. And just by a show of hands, how many of you all?
And just by a show of hands, how many of y'all have heard of the PROMIS program? Okay, that's good. This is not good. We'll fix that tonight, okay? So Dickinson County, you may not realize, is very, very, very lucky. I would say you're the only county in the state of Virginia that offers high school graduates free tuition coverage for up to two years of college. And then you also provide free dual enrollment, that's college credit classes in the high school for your students. I don't think there's any other county in the state that is able to do that. So that's incredible, and I'll tell you why. Our part of the state, you probably know, lags behind the educational attainment rate for a college degree by the rest of the state, by about 20%. So whereas about 70% on average of the rest of the state, our residents have some college degree, we're about 50%. And in order for us to be competitive, both here in this region with Northeast Tennessee and the rest of the state, we need to increase that. We know we need skilled workers, right? And skilled workers in our area doesn't necessarily mean a four-year degree. It can, but that means that they have some college sum, whether that is a 10-week power line and training program or, you know, two-year welding degree program where they can go out and make a living wage when they graduate from college. So that's our goal with the PROMIS program. Starting with the class of 2023 high school graduating class, every student that came to us is, should be eligible if they turn in the proper paperwork. And the proper paperwork is essentially the federal application for financial aid. It's called a FAFSA. And then they have to have a 2.0 GPA, that's like bottom line, right? And they have to fill out a scholarship application. And so those are the minimum requirements. They also, of course, have to be a resident of the state of Virginia. We have some issues in Scott County. We have, you know, some folks from Tennessee that attend Gate City High School. That shouldn't be an issue for you, though. So those are the requirements. And we were able to do that in the other counties in our area, Wise, Lee, Scott, by going to their, and City of Norton, by going to their Board of Supervisors and asking for an appropriation for that. We didn't have to do that in Dickinson County because you all have the Columbus Phipps Foundation, and they have funded all of your Dickinson County students to attend. So you all are so very lucky. And again, the only county that I am aware of that pays for high school students to attend college classes as well. So makes me want to move to Dickinson County because they also fund medical school for folks too that graduate from a Dickinson County high school. So those are great things. For the PROMIS program, last year, we had, well, actually, if you start in 2022, we had 29 students from Ridgeview High School that attended Mountain Empire. And then for 2023, when we started this program, we had 36 students come to us. So that's already a good thing. I'm hoping it wasn't just a fluctuation in your graduating class, but at least our, our PROMIS was that for students who may have thought college was out of their reach financially, we got you covered. So I want everyone to be able to go back and tell people, tell parents, if your kid is considering going to school, you can go to school at no cost, okay? So we had a little bit of an increase in the number of students coming to us. 21 of those 36 students were eligible for PROMIS, and the majority were not eligible because they didn't turn in their federal financial aid application on time. We asked that they turn it in by August 1st. That's not a far stretch, really. But because this is a last dollar scholarship, a student has to find out whether they qualify for federal financial aid for us to be able to kick in whatever portion that they would have to pay out of pocket. And that's what we do. So if they'll fill out the, that part, then we take care of the rest, okay? So we are predicting for the graduating class of 2024 that we'll have 126 graduates from Ridgeview High School, and we think 18 will come to us. So we're going to not only pay for the 2023 class coming in, but also the 2024 class. And we've already had three of our students from 2023, three of our high school graduates earned some credential, whether that is they've continued their dual enrollment and finished a degree, or they've completed a six-month program. So we just wanted, usually with the other counties, we're asking for money. We don't have to ask you all for money. This is a good thing. But it's really great for our region that we're doing something. I don't think any other region is doing it. We're really taking educational attainment seriously and doing something about it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Amy, I knew you had that program. I didn't always call.
Okay, good. That's good.
I didn't raise my hand.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I have some questions. We are very fortunate to have the Columbus Phipps Foundation. I have a niece and a nephew that are completing at UVA Wise their degrees. One is completing in nursing, bachelor's science in nursing, and the other one is in accounting. He's a junior, he's a senior. They both received help. They both received help from the Columbus Phipps Foundation. And Mr. Paul Buchanan is to be very much, he's, he was my teacher in school. He deserves a lot of recognition because of what he's done for the students here in Dickinson County. But I do have a little bit of something to ask of you.
Sure.
I have, went to Southwest Community College. They invited us over for a talk and a tour. And it is my, what I'm seeing is Mountain Empire usually caters more to the Clintwood toward the west, toward Wise County, Scott County, Lee County, and so forth. And but our schools are consolidating now, but most people from Hayes and Sandlick are going to Southwest Community College.
And they should.
Well, my problem, my, my thinking is that I was a little bit dismayed that, I'm glad you're here tonight because to my, was you here the last four years?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah. Okay. I, I, I have never been asked to, I did take a course at Southwest Community College, it was organic chemistry, and.
Bless your heart.
Yeah, it's quite difficult. And English, one course in English. But I think that what, what concerns me is that are you reaching out to these students at Mountain Empire? I know I've never been towards your college. I have never toured your college. And are you finding that, that the students that they graduate from Mountain Empire, are they being accepted at UVA Wise and other four-year degree programs like ETSU, the Pikeville College? Are they being accepted, are their credits readily going? Used to be it was a problem with UVA Wise.
It's not any longer.
They created something legislatively, honestly, called the Uniform Certificate of Graduate Studies. So the first, and we actually offer that, I think Southwest does too, almost every community college offers that through dual enrollment so that a student, if they complete that entire uniform certificate of general studies, that group of any Virginia college, any Virginia State University, not privates because we can't control privates, but anything that's funded by the state, they have to accept that whole group of credits toward their bachelor's degree. So it's called the Guaranteed Admission Agreement.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, absolutely. So we've had students that go to Virginia Tech and engineering program. Oftentimes what happens is those students are, a lot of times universities want those students because they've proven that they can do it for the first 32 credits, the first half of their degree. They're a guaranteed win for a university in terms of retention and completion. So a lot of universities really want those students because they've already demonstrated that they've, that they've gone above and beyond while they're in high school or through their transfer.
What about Emory and Henry? How are they, will they accept?
Emory and Henry will accept them.
There used to be, in my time, they would not accept the credits.
There's a program called Transfer Virginia now too, where you can transfer most, if not all, of your credits in those basic core areas. Now, if you take a welding credit and try to take that to UVA Wise, they may not accept that because it'll have a welding program there. But if you take an English class, English 101, your basic at Mountain Empire, they'll accept it.
Okay, that's good to know because in my time, it wasn't.
What gets challenging, Ron, to really, honestly, is majors. So a college might accept a student as, as a, as a college student, say UVA, I'll just use UVA as an example, or Virginia Tech, because Virginia Tech's a great example.
A lot of them from Southwest go to Virginia Tech.
Yeah, and they'll accept a student as a Virginia Tech student, but then the student decides that they want to major in maybe engineering or in some other, like, business. When they declare a major, sometimes what they're majoring in, their coursework, they usually have about three electives. Sometimes those electives don't fit what their major is. So at most, they can lose nine credits or three classes if they choose a major and they weren't thoughtful about making sure that the three electives worked into the degree that they're going to go into. A lot of students know what they want, where they want to go after.
Most don't.
And most don't. So they end up losing a few credits because they didn't quite know their pathway, and they picked a course that maybe in history that they really needed, maybe a math course, you know, for that elective, depending on what major they pick. So oftentimes what'll happen is they'll be accepted, all their credits will come in, but they may need a few more credits to be eligible for that particular degree or that major. And that's where there's still challenges, to be quite frank. We've, we've made huge leaps and bounds on trying to make sure that most of their credits are accepted. They're typically accepted, but maybe not toward the degree that they're seeking.
And Miss Les, that our service region for Dickinson County is split between Southwest and Mountain Empire. So I'm not sure where the dividing line is.
Hayes is the dividing line.
So I want us to work with Mountain Empire because most of them will go to Mountain Empire, a lot of them do, but they're not going to Southwest. But I want, I would like to, I need to tour your campus, which I've never been on the campus. It looks good from the foreline, but, but back in my time, they wouldn't accept the credits. Like, you know, I know my son, he took Western Civilization at Emory and Henry, and it was useless.
Yeah.
He couldn't transfer it to nowhere. So I, I, I'm thankful that you, that this is happening. And I'm also, I'm wondering if UVA Wise has eased up on some of their chemistry and so forth because, well, you know, when I, it was the hardest chem, it was, it was the hardest chemistry I've ever seen was at UVA Wise. And there's not a college around this area can compete with them for their, do they accept your chemistry, your general chemistry?
We had some struggles.
Like nurses have to have or whatever.
Yeah. We have a, we have a great relationship with UVA Wise in terms of transfer. We have the AIM Scholarship. And the one thing that I thought of as you were kind of talking about Ridgeview, and you all may not know this, but both Southwest and Mountain Empire Community College have career coaches or high school navigators in the schools.
No, I didn't know that.
So those are people that work for our college that are there to just help students be able to navigate their pathway through dual enrollment and to, and if they don't take any dual enrollment and they want to come to us when they graduate and they haven't even thought about college until they graduate from high school, then that navigator is there to kind of help them with the application, with the FAFSA, to help them understand the majors, to help them with any career exploration that they may want to do in terms of career assessments and seeing what their capabilities are. So we have people in those schools part-time. They're not there full-time, a couple days of, out of each week in all of the, all of the high schools in our service region.
I didn't know that, but that's a good thing. Didn't have that in my day, but I just had the guidance counselor.
Just let me find out if any of the rest of the board members wants to make a comment.
I'd like to make a comment. I did know about the program because last summer, when graduation was over with, I remembered seeing that on Facebook and would share it. And I even talked to a couple of kids that this was one chance that they needed to do their paperwork to go to school and not have to pay for it and tried to encourage.
It's usually the paperwork that gets them, and sometimes, and this is unfortunate, sometimes students are in a kind of a divorced situation or their grandparents are raising them, and that can cause a delay in getting their financial aid filed for one reason or another.
I had a granddaughter that graduated UVA, I mean, graduated Ridgeview in '22, and she graduated with dual enrollment and went to UVA Wise and is still there. And she went in as a sophomore, didn't, didn't have to go in as a freshman. And now I've got a grandson graduating this year, has done nothing about college, don't even talk about college. I mean, totally opposite.
Send him down to that.
But he is talking about the Lyman's School down there. So I may have one coming your way this summer or fall.
Awesome. Well, and one of the things, one of the reasons that we're doing this really is to help the communities that we serve recognize and to help our graduates that are coming out of high schools understand that the bar has been raised. A high school diploma is not enough anymore to really get you a living wage. And because that's not enough, we're here to support you and make sure that you, you can achieve what you need to in order to be able to earn a living wage.
Appreciate y'all being there. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming. If you don't major in the right thing, you're wasting your time.
Mr. Paul, has he, thank you, sir?
You said there was like, what was the percentage on the tech courses?
I think it was about 40, 40% of our students, 44% take career and technical.
That was an increase over last year of how much still?
Actually, that, that number stays pretty consistent. We usually run between 17 and 19% for our full-time enrolled that are on campus. Dual enrollment usually runs about 65%, 60 to 65% transfer, and 35 to 40% career and tech. And then on campus, about 44%. And then we usually have maybe 3 or 4% that are undecided or undeclared, or that are just coming back for continuing education or to get a class or two, like a bookkeeping course or a quick books course or something that they need for employment in order to move them up in employment.
So the career tech just stays pretty steady in terms of enrollment?
Yeah.
And health science is our largest.
Largest career tech area.
Okay.
I just want to thank you. My daughter graduated from your college and with a nursing degree, and she's now supervisor over a nursing home and doing very well. So thank you for her opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you all for coming and enlightening us. Thank you very much. The next thing on the agenda is Mr. Belcher. Thank you for being patient with us, Mr. Belcher, this afternoon.
I'm going to get up and speak before Wade does. Just.
You're going to take his time.
I'll yield real quickly, I hope, to him. For those that don't know you, I'm Alan Sumter. I'm the residency administrator for VDOT in Wise. I'm the, the, I guess, the leader of the group. I try to keep Wade straightened out most of the time there.
Well, you do a good job, I have to say. Wonderful.
I've got Wade with me, and also David Hampton is our maintenance manager. I think y'all have, some of you have worked already real closely with both of, both of them. They do a fine job taking care of you, and I'm very appreciative of that. My purpose tonight, I just wanted to come and speak to you just a few minutes, and then I'm going to let Wade talk to you about some of your individual items, things that we've got going on. But I wanted to go over just some things in general about VDOT and some of the things that we've had going on. So real quickly, I know we'd have a couple of new board members here. We got, it's always like this, when you get up, then your throat gets that way.
Got some water? There's some water up in there.
I'll get you some.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
I've got one sitting here if it's thawed up yet. They're probably going to be frozen.
Well, that refrigerator is working real good. It's frozen everything in there.
It's still that time of the year, and then allergies will guess will move in real quickly. Okay, we'll try it again. So Wise residency, we are responsible for Lee, Scott, Wise, and Dickinson Counties are the offices that we take care of, the roadways that are within those counties. And we. And we have around a hundred and twenty-five employees that work out of the Wise Residency performing different duties. And the, we've got around twenty-two or so that work here in Dickinson County on the maintenance crew. We recently moved into our new facility up on Caney Ridge. That'd been a long time in the making. We've got moved into that. We still have some additional facilities along the line that will have to be built as time goes on, such as some salt storage facilities and equipment, storage facilities, things of that nature as we, as we go down, down the road. But we've got our men working out of there. We still are using the old Fremont office for storage, for salt materials, pipes and so forth. And we'll be working out there for the foreseeable future as, as well. So, a couple of things about the way that, that we work. We have, we work with you all very, very closely with different fundings of projects and, and with different types of projects that goes on. We also, of course, we take care of the maintenance, as I mentioned, with the crews that are there. And we have a maintenance funding program that's somewhere probably around a million, million and a half dollars. That's our annual maintenance budget for Dickinson County. And then we also have the six-year plan that we work with you all with on construction projects. And then as well, we are also engaged with working with you at the coal severance program and using those funds out on the roads to make road improvements as, as well. So, I gave you a, they're, or Wade actually handed it out to you, but we've got a report that we have been going around, and I've been speaking to the other counties as well. And our purpose of providing this report is kind of give you a little summary of what we have going on within Dixon County. And our goal is going to be to provide this to you quarterly when we come to you and give you a, a report on where things stand. So, if you can, the first thing that I'm going to do, I'm going to cover a couple of these and then let Wade come back up and talk to you about the requests that are on here specific to your names and items that you have on there. So, just kind of summarize, over the last few months, we've been engaged in the wintertime activities. Kind of limits us on a lot of what we can do. We can't really do a lot of paving. We try to do some patching, things of that nature, that obviously grass isn't growing during that time. But we also are trying to do trimming of vegetation, some tree trimming, things like that. And we still have some gravel roads here in the county that we work to try to take care of. And gravel roads are one of our most challenging things because the conditions change continuously on a gravel road. In the summertime, we've got dust and, and washboarding. And then when wintertime comes, then we deal with calls about mud and, and needing gravel and those types of things too. So, we kind of have to spend all year long, really, doing something on the gravel roads. So, after we had the big snowstorm in January, as the thaw occurred, then we ended up having to spend a lot of time rebuilding the surface on some of those roadways that are unpaved. And we've been working on putting stone down on them and trying to do some grading on those. We also, we've been working on doing patching, but that's been using the coal-mixed asphalt. That's the pre-made that we place into the holes and the potholes that are out there that it's not, obviously not the, the real big pavement, full-width pavement, because asphalt plants aren't working this time of the year. So, as soon as asphalt plants start opening up, and with the weather forecast the way that it is, it seems like we, that, you know, Mr. Groundhog was friendly to us and that we may end up having an early spring. And if that's the case, usually asphalt plants will open a little earlier as well. And then we will start trying to do larger wholesale patching on the roadways as we, we get into spring. Then the other item that we have are the work orders. That is the area where to our call center. And there's the eight-hundred number, eight-hundred-three-six-seven-road, that's seven-six-two-three. And enter work order to request a service request of something. It may be, a citizen may call in and say, hey, we, we've got a stopped-up ditch in front of our house. It may be a pipe stopped up. Summertime, it may be we can't see because the grass needs to be mowed or a patching needs to be done. And then within, we try to, within fourteen days, to, when that is received in, reach out to the citizen and investigate that and determine if any work needs to be done and then schedule that in our work plan. On your report, I started jokingly telling you no reading ahead there, but I noticed you were reading there on some of you, on the second page of the report. What we have for you is a summary of last year's in the kind of the major categories that we receive of the types of work orders that we have. So, last year, in these major categories, which a lot of it included dead animal pickup, drainage, dust control, the vegetation control, potholes, those types of things, we had five-hundred-and-seventeen work orders that were received in. And we were able to close five-hundred-and-ten of them. And at the year's end, we had seven left open. Now, there were still some other work orders that were out there that, like pavement stropping request and things like that, that are kind of the unusual items that are still there. But these are some of the main topics that we receive. In the right-hand column, you see that sometimes it takes different times to close those work orders out. You'll see sometimes there's some of them that were closed out with like two days, I guess was the shortest amount of time, to some of them running up into seventy-some days. That can be for different reasons. The one thing that I want to kind of mention and, and point out is that VDOT is, has their work reviewed by, over twenty-some agencies can look into our work, like for environmental reasons. We have like DEQ, the Corps of Engineers. We have all different types of agencies that we often have to get approval for our work to be done. So, sometimes we can have a person call and say, hey, the ditch is stopped up in front of my house. Will you please come clean it out? Well, when we go out, we have an environmentalist that works for us. And then when we go out and review that, they've got maps and everything. They can even be a small stream, three or four inches wide. And because that's considered to be like a live stream, we're told then that we have to have permit clearance before we can do any type of work. So, that requires us having to run it through, get all those different permits, all the agencies given an opportunity to comment on it. And then once we have what we call the blue card in hand, that's the permits, then we're able to go to work. And sometimes in those situations, we've seen it take one to two years before we've ever gotten the permissions and the permits back to be able to perform that type of work. So, it's not, certainly not our intention to try to procrastinate on that type of work, but we have to make sure that we're legal to, to do that and get that, that work accomplished. Not just things in the streams, but like when it comes to projects, some of you may be aware, you know, we've, that we've got a lot of endangered species in our area. Bats are like one of the things that we have. When we have a construction project, we, or if we're going to do any tree cutting, then we have to have it reviewed to see if there are any kind of endangered bats that are, that that's their nesting ground. And if they are, then we have to schedule that work whenever they, they aren't in that area and doing that. So, those types of things affect work order or, or work order scheduling and our overall operations. But, you know, again, we try to, to get it done as quickly as we can. And we are taking a, a little harder look at some of our work orders and ways that we can communicate better to folks on, you know, what maybe some of the obstacles that are going to keep us, slow us down from accomplishing the work. And then, of course, there are sometimes there are things that'll be off the right-of-way or something like that, where that sometimes, you know, we just can't do. You know, we'll, we will receive a request that we, that we can't do work, you know, as requested. So, those are some things that I just kind of wanted to, to real quickly mention to you. I also want to talk specifically about projects for just a minute. Back on the first page, we have a project update for you. Now, a lot of the projects that we have had and ongoing here in Dixon County have been, fortunately, been able to move forward over the last several years because we still had funds coming in from the coal severance program. And projects that we have been working on, I'll just go through the list and touch on those a little bit. We have the coal severance overlays. Those are, were eleven roads that the coal committee worked and identified. And we started on those. It was around nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars of value of work in it. And we've completed five of those. And when asphalt plants open in the spring, that's something that we'll be getting back to work on, is completing the other six of those routes. We have two sections of Route 603, Steve's Branch. I think it's over in the, kind of over in the B area. Two, two specific projects. One of them's two-hundred thousand and the other one's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And when I mentioned the environmental review, like the, all the things, like the checking out for permits, the bats, those things, that's what we're in the process of having done right now. And we're hoping that those will get cleared to the point that we, we're hoping to see construction started on those projects this year is, is our sincere hope. The, the next project that is on the list, it says Tom's Creek, and we really should probably listed that as Sandy Ridge. That's 652, coming over from Coburn and over into here to Dixon County. There's a one-point-six miles of that that's funded for five-hundred-and-forty thousand. And we, we're in the preliminary planning of that now, scoping that out. Also, some of the reviews that we have to do from that, from an engineering standpoint. Now, the other area that we do construction projects with is on the secondary six-year plan. That is one of the areas that some of you that's been on the board be familiar with what in the past that we've come and worked with you with. That is the area where the state provides funding on, on projects. So, the way that I've summarized this, been a lot of questions in some of the other counties about that, is that in 2015, whenever the transportation law and codes were updated, the General Assembly passed a bill, and it included for unpaved roads, a funding statewide of twenty-five million dollars per year is the funding that was put forward to that. And so, then the way that then that was distributed is the total number of gravel roads that are within the county, each particular county, that have a traffic count of above fifty vehicles per day based upon the total number of unpaved roads statewide. So, it's a, you get that percentage that's there of that. Now, I also included here on the back page, it tells here on the bottom, it says district grant unpaved program. And you'll see that the, the funding of that has run anywhere from twenty-seven thousand to what is projected in the, the out-years, as we call it, of around ninety-one thousand dollars rounded up per year. In the last column, you will see that there is no money shown in there yet, and that is because we've not received the funding for fiscal year thirty. Each year, we, we come to the counties that we work with on the unpaved roads, and we update the funding and any projects that goes in, in that last year. So, what will be happening then, well, I'd say before that, is that we've got two projects that are, that we are, have in the plan now that we're working on doing the funding with. And that is 644 Little Caney Ridge Road. And as you see, it's one-point-five-five miles, and it will be funded to be able to be built construction in 2027 at four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. And then 707, that's Lockhart, I believe it's actually Lockhart Flats Loop. I believe it shows on the map there. And that's just a short quarter of a mile project. And we had to do a little edit there. That will be funded in 2029 at a current estimated value of around a hundred-and-forty thousand. It does, our, our historical cost is, it shows that on average, it's about two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars per mile for us to construct a gravel roadway to build it and pave it. So, that's based upon the estimates that we have now. So, we, on those two projects, we've already started saving money in the bank, accruing funds, so to speak. And we're saving that money up. And that, what that's really saying is that the money that we're seeing come available of that ninety thousand that's there, we will have enough funding saved up to put Little Caney Ridge to construction in 2027, and then the Lockhart Loop Road in 2029. Okay? So, that's, that's how that money has, has been, has been spent. Now, we've been setting aside, you'll see also on the back page, there is telefee money that's shown in that. That telefee money is money that's collected from telephone companies to have their lines on VDOT right-of-way. A lot of times, people that still, if you still have like a landline, I can recall seeing it and passed on a bill when I had one. Most of those, you know, probably don't have, or not too many have them anymore. There'd be a little thing down there every month. It'd be like telefee, one dollar, that'd be added into your fee. That was where this money went to. It was really passed along to the consumer, but it's collected. And so, we're getting around forty-two thousand dollars a year. And in the past, what we have been doing with that is we've been banking that for roads that are not in the system, for what we call at, at VDOT, new additions or rural additions, not to be confused with rural rustic projects. So, I'm saying all that to kind of give you a, a little bit of background because... So I'm saying all that to kind of give you a little bit of background because what will be happening here in the next few months is that we will receive an updated allocation for the out years and this fiscal year 30. And we'll be coming to you and say, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Board Members, it's time to update our secondary six-year plan. Do we want to continue to still fund these projects and move them along as has been previously put in the plan? Or do we want to change something or whatever at this point? And so we will, the way we typically work that is we'll contact Larry, talk with him. He'll be talking with you all. And then around probably April or May, depending upon when we get the notice of those funds, then we'll have a public hearing then to receive comment from the public on how they want to, you know, how they feel about that we've got the money funded and then vote on that. So I've covered a lot of that real quickly, but I just wanted to kind of go over that to just kind of give you a little background. Probably left something out, and I'm sorry if I did. I liken it to like, for me, is when I go to the doctor's office at times, I'll go in and he'll sit down and talk to me about my problems, and he'll start making all these statements about this bone and that bone and, you know, and then I'll ask him what bone that's at, and he'll say, that's your knee, that kind of thing, or your hip. And so he understands what he's saying, but, you know, I'm sitting there nodding my head at times thinking, okay, I've got it, but really, I'm sitting inside going, no, I don't. So if I've left you that way, I apologize there with that. Before Wade comes up and goes over your your other items, I will point out, we did have on the new additions, we recently received, I'm not sure, let's see, which one of you maybe has sent, huh? Yes. Okay, yeah, Mr. Hall about Jeff's Record Road. So that is a new addition. So we don't have an estimate on that at this point in time, but the thing to remember that like there's two options really. You could fund it through like this telefee money and put that toward it as one source of fund. If that were to be the only way you would fund it, and say the project ends up costing, I'm just going to say half a million dollars, it would just be like kind of working on your house. You'd save $42,000 every year until you got enough. So you kind of figure out how long that would take you before you'd ever reach that point to be able to get it to construction because you have to have it fully funded, excuse me, before before we can ever go to construction. Now, we we've had some some other options. One of the things that we've successfully used here, like in Dixon County and Wise County in the past, funding projects is the revenue sharing program. The revenue sharing program is a dollar-for-dollar match where the county has typically in the past used like coal severance funds and use those to apply for sometimes a state-funded roadway or even a new addition type project. And then you can apply, I think, up to like $2 billion, like as an example or so. And then they are they are prioritized statewide. You're in competition with a certain amount of like $50 million statewide. So everybody can put, so you might come up and say, well, we're going to put forward $2 million. And then if successful, then the state's going to match back that $2 million, and you've got that banked, and you can use that toward a project there. One that we've recently done is Rita's Lane. We we applied for that one for revenue sharing, I believe.
That ain't re- that's not recently. That's been four years ago.
Well, I think we voted on it since I came back.
I live on that road.
Is that the or is that the one, is it Rita's Lane? Or is it the the one that we talked, oh, okay, I know which one.
It's out by Ice Ridge.
Yes.
It's a little.
I'm sorry, I was mixed up with the one going up to.
The Ag Center.
Yeah, to the Ag Center.
Yeah, the Ag Center.
I'm sorry, I'm mixed up with that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But that's an example of of a road that can, you know, where revenue sharing money is like put on.
Trying to do, yeah.
Yeah, to to try to do that. And so so that's a funding option to do these things as well. You're not guaranteed that money. It's like it's like applying for a scholarship or a grant, like, you know, the ladies here talking about college, so to speak, a while ago, is you don't know if you're going to get it or don't don't know if you're not, but it you've got to have the money, the resource available to be able to apply for it to start with before you can even see if you can get it. So before I turn over to Wade, that do do you all have any questions regarding any of those topics that I've covered? One positive I've had is I've looked over, and Larry's nodded his head time or two, so I guess I've not been too far off base then, have I?
I'll ask him. Does anyone want to speak?
Yeah, I've got.
Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
On the environmental studies and permits that you have to get. I'm sure we have to pay for those.
We.
Does that come out of the whose budget?
Well, those are federal, every project that we set forth the funds for, we have what we call a PE phase that we set forth. So the the 485,000, like you see, that's in there, whatever, that includes when we give you an estimate, we give you an estimate that's based on the PE phase. So the projects that that are funded with coal severance, that's where that money's coming through all that. Now, usually, I'll be honest with you, that that usually doesn't run into a lot of money. We're usually are talking anywhere for the projects like I described there, you know, 5,000 to 10,000 is usually a big fee if we get that much in there. The thing that is that's the most impact of those is the time. That's the where we have the greatest impact is the the waiting. So the other, the so like Corps of Engineers or DEQ, they don't charge us a fee for those. They don't charge us for that. The that money that I mentioned, that is for like our VDOT staff to go to these meetings where the folks sit around the table, much like we are here today, and that gives them the opportunity to ask questions about it, and they submit documentation for review. And then that review is done, and but the the funds expended off the project are, like I said, our staff to go and explain it to folks, like what we want to do and that kind of thing, and then come and then comes back and tells us. Now, there might be some impact as far as like on certain projects that like they may come back and say, well, you, you know, if, like as an example, we don't have any on here, but say we've got a bridge project that's in there, and they may tell us, okay, well, you can build it, but you're going to have to use cofferdams, or you're going to have to use this, so you you'll have to incorporate some things like that into the design. But as far as like the, I think last count I was given is like 26 other agencies that have the opportunity to review and comment on our work. They don't charge us for those.
Okay.
Any any other questions for me on those?
Thank you, Mr. St.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to sit down and drink my water, and I'm going to let, you want to drink my water, Wade?
I've been prepared.
Oh, you've come prepared? Okay, good. All right. Thank you for letting me come talk to you tonight.
Thank you for coming.
We, you know, we're going to try to come quarterly, going to produce you, you know, the report. We're available. If you've got questions, Wade and David, they, I know they spend a lot of time trying to look after things that you contact them about.
They do.
And so.
Are you their boss?
Yes.
I want to say that Wade is very nice to talk to. I'm not, I think I talked to David one time, and they both have been very, very.
Okay, that's enough. They'll be wanting a raise.
I know praise is what to get done. I'm saying their attitude is very good.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Be a hard act to follow, but I'll try. It's good to see everybody again. Mr. Thacker, Mr. Hall, it was good to come out and meet with you the other day, you know, get a feel for what some of your concerns are as new board members and things. And then Ms. Kaiser, Ms. Willis, Ms. Luss, it's always nice to see you again. I appreciate the praise. But like Alan said, I just wanted to go over some of the specific complaints that that we've got or questions that we've got from from you as board members. Ms. Willis, you had contacted us about some potholes on Route 627. They're on the schedule for repair.
Okay.
Like Alan was saying, we're still waiting on some asphalt plants and stuff to open up. So we try to take care of those that we can take care of with coal patch, but some of them are beyond that. So we'll have to wait on asphalt plants to open. And as you can see there, we we've got that scheduled for you. You had contacted me the other day requesting the county line sign there on Route 634.
Right, is it virtually, yes.
Sheriff had had some trouble with an accident, contacted the sign crew, and they are going to install that for you. But as we discussed on the phone, that sign will have to be ordered in special made from Richmond.
Thank you.
Ms. Luss, you had requested some debris to be removed on Route 72. That was completed.
Yes, it's before it's on, it's in the Clintwood District. It was at Whispering Pines.
Yes.
Yes, I think that's it. And you also, they, somebody called, there's about four people live up there that called and said that that was on scheduled maybe to be paved. It's in pretty bad shape, really, patch, 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 patch.
I've got Mr. Hampton taking notes for me, so we'll double check on that and make sure.
Roseanne Hughes lives up in there. It's Whispering Pines, and I appreciate you doing that. But you did, they did call some, her, I think, and said that they would, that they intended to pave that, repave it. It's paved, but it's just patch, patch.
Breaking up, yeah. Well, we'll check on on what we've got on the schedule and what's coming up, and I'll I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Or that's, I'm guessing that's whose district is that? Is that?
That's in my district.
Your district?
It's before you get to, which switches over to Kennedy at the DSS building.
Okay. And then Ms. Kaiser, so Route 80 is on the paving schedule for Route 2025. You had had some questions about that from the intersection of Route 611 to Garden Hole Road and from the intersection of Route 83 to the intersection of Route 63. So both sections of Route 80 from those intersections will get paved. And then you had sent some requests earlier, some questions earlier in the day, and I had to put those on a separate page.
Okay.
You had asked about Cypress Lane, some ditches around there. You were correct that Cypress Lane was not state maintained, but there was some ditch work that we did around Dyers Chapel. We did some spot ditching and cleaned some pipes around one and a half months ago. And the area headquarters will schedule ditching on Sutherland Ridge and will complete, you know, necessary maintenance when we can. But when we get into the ditch and we get into the environmental permits and stuff that Alan was talking about, so.
Well, I think the gentleman that lives on Cypress Lane that had contacted me, he's also interested in, off of Sutherland Ridge Road to get to Cypress Lane, you got to go out Ruse Road. And he's interested in Ruse Road and Cypress Lane becoming a state road.
Okay, that would get into the rural addition.
Sort of like that Jeff Record Road.
Yeah.
Thing, too.
And then your question, too, was about Powerhouse Hollow. And we, the road is part state maintained and the other half is the towns. The part we maintain is where you go in from the food city and the gas and go side about three quarters of a mile up, and the area headquarters plans to go out and inspect the ditch lines and clean out the pipes in the near future. Again, waiting on environmental permits and and thanks for that.
I think you're talking, you're Powerhouse Road here in Clintwood?
Am I in the wrong section?
Yeah, you're in the wrong section.
Wrong.
That's my district, but I would appreciate anything you could do for them because they got sure got a rough road.
Okay.
Now, what was you going to do? Because I.
They're going to do some, they're going to inspect the ditches out there and try to get the pipes cleaned out and stuff, so.
I mean, I I watched a YouTube video the other day where they, y'all should buy some unclogged drain pipes. They took a tire and pulled it through the drain pipe.
We've got several options, actually. We've got, we've got a thing that can go on the end of a backhoe that can can be shoved in, and then as you pull it out, it's got some wings on it that spread open, and we'll pull those out. And then we've got, also got contractors who have the capability of bringing in what's called a back truck that will shoot high-pressure water in there to bust up that material, and then it vacuums it out as it does that.
Well, I don't know, that road you were talking about, I'd say there's four or five drain pipes there that in the ditch, you know, there's a problem all over the county with ditches, y'all, the ditches not being cleaned out. And, you know, that Powerhouse Road there is in the town of Clintwood.
Yeah.
But it it sure is in bad shape. I mean, it's it's dangerous about pacing, and you can only get one car sometimes through there.
Well, we we spoke with area headquarters today, and they're, we're going to start doing some work on that as soon as we can get some permits and stuff and get those ditches cleaned up.
Where do y'all take your stuff that DEQ requires you? If you plan out a ditch, where do you take it to?
We have to have approved dump sites.
Where is your dump site?
For that. Well, it just depends. We, they have to be kept under an acre, or we have to get into even more permits and erosion plans.
That's just ceiling stuff they started.
They're usually on private citizens that that have requested, you know, to fill in an area. And then, again, we have to get that section environmentally permitted, and it can't be within so many feet of a structure or a well or anything of that nature. And then once it's approved, then we've got several around the county. We open and close them all the time to restabilize them and seed them, and then we'll open them back up. So I can't tell you exactly off the top of my head where they're dumping right now, but.
That you guys, that they would be so concerned about coming out of ditch line, and your building is located beside a big dump. It's just stupid, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, they won't, they, DEQ, they've stopped pound river people from, well, I'm going to get a soapbox, but they're going to worry about stuff coming out of a ditch line, and you guys are located right beside the biggest dump in Dixon County. Wade, what I was talking about on Powerhouse, I believe that's the name of it. You go up Mill Creek out of Clinchco.
Okay.
And it's a road that turns left up through there to several houses, and some of that may be the town of Clinchco.
Okay.
And that, but there was a lady, a Mrs. Duty, that lives up there.
Okay.
Calls me, and she, out of everybody that lives up there, she's about the only one that ever calls with a road complaint because she called back in back in January that they had only scraped so far and didn't finish scraping the rest and and all that. That was just, you know, maybe something they could look at and see if it's the town of Clinchco or how much is, it may not be state maintained past her place, too, so.
We've we've got road logs and measurements of all of our state right of way, so we can have that checked. But I'm sorry, we're such a short time today. We just got a break confused. But we will check on that one for you.
And I probably didn't state that it was off of Mill Creek Road in Clinchco either.
But then I I know the other day you had contacted Dave as well about Nancy Hollow Road.
Yeah.
And we did check into that, and back in November, there was quite a bit of work done up there in November of 2023. The ditches were cleaned, pipes were open, we we applied new stone to the road and worked it with a grader.
On that seven tenths of a mile past that last house that goes on up to the top of the mountain, is that what had been worked? Or was that just up through on the main Nancy Hollow? Or was that up through there?
From from what the headquarters have told us, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, that that did include that that section up through there that they had.
They said it was showing up seven tenths of a mile past that last house.
Yeah.
Can you tell me there's a cemetery or something?
I think the gentleman of Breeding, uh, Mr. Breeding is the one who's been calling me about that. And he says there's either two or three cemeteries. One cemetery is a Sutherland Cemetery that has about 93 graves in it and, uh, that is just hard, hard to get to. He told me today, when I talked to him, that, um, if I didn't have a four wheel drive, I probably shouldn't even be trying to go on that section of the road. Cause I told him that I wanted to try to come and look at it. And he said, well, if you don't have a four wheel drive, you probably don't even need to try to go. So, you know.
Again, on that one, we, we may need to check the end of state maintenance and, and make sure our guys know where that's at and make sure the citizen knows exactly where that's at. And if it's not marked up there, we'll talk with the sign crew and have them mark where the end of state maintenance is. So everybody's clear on that.
Okay.
But for the, the, the guys are, as of right now, they're, they're pretty sure that they did dismaintenance on everything that was state maintained. So we'll just make sure that they know where that exactly is.
Okay. I don't think there's no one lives up there past that, what did he tell me that person's name? A Freddie Sutherland or something?
The cemetery.
Is the last house and it's from there up. That is the roughest part of the road trying to get to those cemeteries. And there's nobody lives up, up through there.
Okay. We'll, we'll check and if it's state maintained, we'll make sure to, to address it. Uh, then the fourth issue was Alley Road off of Date Mountain Road.
Yeah.
Uh, with the ditch lines being full and water that runs off the opposite side of the road. Um, we have done some spot ditching up there on that route over the past year just trying to take care of some of the worst areas.
Right.
And they, they do have plans to try to get out there again and, and do some more, uh, ditching, hopefully some more substantial ditching instead of just spot ditching. Uh, and then the, the patch, patching that you mentioned desperately needed throughout the county. We are aware of that this winter being so cold and having to put down chloride, a different type of chemical to melt the snow. It was just really tough on the asphalt and stuff. So we are just waiting on asphalt plants to open up to try to get some of that patch.
Well, I, I knew with the weather and the timing that the patching, but I also just wanted to make mention of it about, you know, cause I had people to call me about potholes and stuff on their roads and, and I just didn't list all of the road numbers, you know.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it. And our, our guys are, they're pretty good about making note of that stuff and, you know, keeping a list at the headquarters of what, what's out there, what needs to be done. Uh, but to another one of your issues, you had, you had brought up the Dunrobin Bridge issue. Uh, that, I had some discussions with Mr. Mullins about why that had happened today. And when they changed 63 through there, that portion of that road should have been abandoned, but that, the bridge there at the end was never in the state system. So it was not getting inspected. It, it didn't have a structure number and there was no way to ensure the safety of, of traveling over that bridge. But where, uh, basically the, the county would have to be willing to take control of that bridge there if they ever wanted to open that section back up.
Well, our main, my main question on that is, is, I mean, the bridge to be opened as well, but on the, on the Dunrobin Road side of the bridge, we on the property on the right-hand side. And, and the, then there's two people that live, well, one house is not accessible, accessible from Dunrobin Road and the other house is, that red brick house. About that property, is that property ever going to be?
Is it gonna be reverted back to like a?
To a landowner who, who had that in the past or, or whatever?
Have to be abandoned, wasn't it Alan first? It, it would have to be abandoned first and go through that process before it, it can.
If you're abandoning, it's gonna go back to the center of the roadway.
Yeah.
That's there. And this was a topic back, um, some of you don't know, but I've, I've served two terms being RA here. And it's, uh, all the way back to probably, I remember 2013 or 14, you know, we got concerns, folks complained about speeding, people going down that road, moving the ride and fast. And, and that came up. And then, so we, we checked into it and found out the bridge wasn't even, wasn't even ours anymore to take care of. And so we closed it off. And then, uh, from what I remember is if you then ended up abandoning it, it was gonna cause a most lane block in there with the, you know, that roadway to get, you know, with the whole, I realized you was one of the ones that owned down through there. I can't remember if we talked to you then or whatever, but there was one side that, uh, you know, the attic, tree, the other side wasn't gonna be able to. And then, you know, there would have to be some kind of roadway established. So that played in part with us talking, I remember with our legal folks, uh, the roadway bridge and everything. And plus that, we just, you know, just closed that. So, um, I'm not sure. It's, you know, not being a very clean situation, I guess, trying to figure out how to resolve that.
Well, I have lived in the area, um, since November of 83 and there have been people in those homes with children. And I have never heard of no one getting hit, no accidents, no issues with nothing. The school bus used to come through there, everything. And until the family, the Lyle family that moved in that red brick house, there was never an issue until they moved in and then called you all to close that road because the traffic was too much, uh, too, people going through there too fast. They couldn't put a fence up to block the, whatever. And I mean, all of those years, there had never been issues with families and visitors or whatever. And until, till then, and then it got closed. But as being a joining landowner, we was never notified.
But then what came to light though was the condition of the bridge.
Yeah.
And so you had the conflict of the, the traffic issues, then a bridge that we weren't maintaining and don't believe that it's safe, uh, traffic to be crossing. So we had to take action that's there with that. I mean, um, you know, we, I mean, our bridges and things that we take care of, what they are now, I mean, there's even, you know, a structure built underneath that if you remember.
I don't know that I was ever under it, but you know, it's just been there. But I mean, that mainly about the land, how that, you know, about the road, you know, and all that. But, you know, whatever, whenever, whatever.
Ms. Kaiser, I think that was the last issue that, that we had brought up or that you had brought up to us. Uh, Mr. Thacker, you had brought up the, the pipes on Route 16, 616. Uh, we routinely try to clean those at least three times a year. Uh, uh, Route 605 ditching, uh, is complete on the front section and the back section is halfway done. And of course they'll work towards trying to complete that. Uh, Doe Branch ditching will be submitted for environmental permits. Uh, potholes reported in areas have been patched. Uh, cracked roadways are being assessed to be patched, or if they're bad enough, we may have to try to get them on our paving schedule. Um, and then another issue that wasn't on here that we had talked about while we were in Hayside was the officers coming out to, to assist the litter pickup crews. I, I'd sent Larry an agreement for, for you guys to take a look at that for sheriff's deputies and, and, um, the people that work at the regional jail to, to be able to get paid by VDOT to, to do that. So, um.
Thank you for that. Do you have any update on the pond and water in the middle of Hayside?
Yes, I, I do. That was gonna be the next thing I, I touched on. We did go back and review our, our plans for that section of roadway that was built in there. And unfortunately, when, when that was initially built, it was a, like a paved ditch over to where that drop inlet's at in their parking lot there. Uh, so whoever came in after that and developed it, kinda connected on to everything there and paved over it. And there was never any easement or, or anything. So from, from that drop inlet on under their, their bank would be the bank's responsibility. Uh, and it would be VDOT's responsibility under the road to that drop inlet. So, you know, if, if, if we, they, they would probably need to work with us in concert to try to, you know, as we clean out our section to try to get their section opened up. Uh, because if we unstop our section and they don't unstop their section, then it's just going back up into their parking lot and fill back up, back under the road. But unfortunately, that wouldn't be something that we can clean out with, where there's no easement or anything there. Cause then, you know, there's liability of it being an older pipe and start collapsing and, and the bank start having some issues with their foundation or, or anything. And it, it being off a right of way that, so that would be on them to try to help us with that situation.
Where do we go from, from here? Do we need to have a meeting with the?
Yeah, I'd say it'd be good to talk with the bank and, and let them know that. And I can, if you wanna reach out to me tomorrow or something, I'd be willing to talk with you some more about it. Mr. Hall, you, you had, uh, brought up some potholes, trimming and, and ditching that you had reported. Uh, those have been completed or scheduled. Again, some of the ditching could need permits, that sort of thing. And then the, the other issue that we had discussed the other day, I think Alan addressed there in his presentation, you know, uh, the Jeff's Record Road situation with the rural addition. Hopefully that answered some of your questions there.
Yeah. Uh, on this reporting, if somebody calls in, reports stopped up the pipes, ditches, things like that, uh, those issues get addressed just as much as me calling in?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yes, absolutely. And like, like Alan stated, once, once the, a citizen calls those in and it's, and it's reported into our system, that, that starts getting tracked and, and it gives us 14 days, we have to contact the citizen back. Uh, and then it also puts it in and starts, you know, if it, if a work order is open past 90 days, then it starts putting more pressure on it and, and that sort of thing. So it is very helpful to have them called into this system. So it starts tracking them and, and we can look at separate issues, you know. Uh, we can see how, what the average day is. It's taken us to close work orders for particular issues that we're having. So, um, they, they do get the same amount of attention. And I would say that's, that's the best way to put in a complaint with, you know, you're all more than welcome to keep contacting myself or Dave any, anytime. But that is a good, good way to get it in the system, get it tracked.
Okay. Then you got a contact that's close to the, I guess, problem area and if you need to contact them to?
Yes. That, once that goes into the system and they call the 1-800-4-RHOES and report their issue, it automatically sends an email out to myself, David, Alan, um, all the people at Fremont Area Headquarters, which would be the ones that within two weeks, they will respond to the customers unless it's an issue where one of us need to be involved. That would come, uh, it wouldn't go to the Fremont Area Headquarters. That would come to us and we would see it. But.
Now, what about guardrails? If I have some areas that have concern that need some guardrail?
Uh, you, you can turn in a request through the work order system or, uh, if you'd like to call me sometime, we can talk about it and we, we can have our person that reviews guardrail to come out and look at it. But either, either way, it would be okay.
Alright. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, Wade. I probably go, I didn't mean, I wasn't throwing off on you. I, I was directing my things to DEQ.
I understand.
Cause you know, it used to be they let, they didn't act like our county didn't exist.
Yeah.
Now all of a sudden, the last four years, they coming down on our heads.
Well, our purpose is not to throw them under the bus.
Oh, I, I like to throw them sometimes.
But there are multiple agencies, not just DEQ. There's, you know, there's, like cert cases, Department of Forestry, Gaines and Allen Fisheries. There's, there's all kinds of folks that, you know, have the opportunity to, to comment. There's, there's a lot of people that have a lot of interest in things, you know, out there.
I know. I worked in Department of Health for 30, 34 years. But one thing, uh, about the roundabout, I thought, Wade, you gonna tell me two years or what are you gonna say?
I don't know. That, that's more Mr. Williams, uh, or Mr. Mullins's area.
I've been here 20 years, four years.
I, I'm not involved in the design of that.
Who is that, Mr.?
I'll have to talk to Mr. Mullins about that.
They are, they're moving along with the design of that. I don't know the timeframe that's there.
It's dangerous. It's so dangerous. I come up there this evening and I declare, I like them got out in the road.
But they are, there's the design, everything's moving along.
And it's a county problem. It's not just County Ridge or Rose Ridge. Of course, the schools up there. So how long are you projecting now then?
I'm thinking, I don't want to tell you wrong. So we'll, we'll find out and let you know the schedule.
Oh, goodness. I've been hearing it for four years.
Wait, I have a, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Those, uh, erosions that I had on the upper end of County Ridge.
On 649?
Yes. Uh, are they gonna put those guardrails back? I know it's hard to get people in here to do guardrails.
Yes, they are. Any guardrail that we took down for those slides will be put back up.
Cause I know they still have those little, uh, I don't watch them call them.
We got the poles sticking there. Yeah. Uh, the, yeah, those will be temporary, just, uh.
Why do you, it's hard to get guardrail people?
Yeah, we, we've got one guardrail crew for 12 counties. So, and then, you know, interstate, things like that take priority over secondary routes. So it, it can take some time to get it scheduled, but they, it is on the schedule to be done. And I, I can see if I can give an update for that, but, uh, you know, depending on they could have a.
I know there's some guardrails laying there, but I don't know if that's what they took out and still there or if that's, it doesn't look like new ones.
It's what they took out to, they, sometimes they'll leave it behind in, in case the guardrail installer is gonna go back with that same old piece, which I'm sure they won't up there, the new guardrail.
Hey Wade, uh, that Powerhouse Spearhead is located right from there. They, they used to call that Snowball Hall or I think it still is called Snowball Hall.
Yeah, that.
So a Spearhead Trail up there, you know, that road's terrible shape and part of that is gravel.
That may not be stayed though, is it?
It stops right there, I think where the Dixons used to live.
Right, because Spearhead maintains it from that point on.
Yeah, Spearhead maintains it from the last house. Uh, but it's still, it, it ponds right there and it, that's an important thing for our county. Cause you know, people go up there and shoot and skeet shoot and stuff like that and, and archery. Uh, so, you know, that, that pulls all the time if we have any kind of rain, uh, rainstorm. Are you aware of down Pound River where they're fixing that slide?
I think that's the town of Pound, I think, is actually fixing.
No, no, it's in Clintwood. It's in my district.
Oh, I thought you were talking about in the town of Pound.
No, I know where that is. I'm talking about down Pound River where they're fixing that big slide, sliding into the river.
That's, uh, the Department of Energy is actually doing that.
Yeah, they're Department of Energy. But, and they've got the road closed. I've had some people complaining that they couldn't get garbage truck through there. But if they set, they got a sign up that says road closed. Does that mean you're not supposed to go through that sign? I went through the sign the other day. I had a trouble. Nobody was working.
I will contact the Department of Energy. They, they could be at a point to where they're almost done with it or something. So you made it three, five?
No, that slide is huge. Two million dollar project.
Well, I know. I just, uh, I talked to them a couple of months ago when they were starting. So I don't know where they're at with that process because that, they're the ones repairing it.
Was it against the law to go through a sign that says road closed?
Yeah.
What was that? I'm sorry.
I did the other day. Nobody hadn't worked in two weeks.
I, I'll contact them and see where they're at. I've got a contact with the Department of Energy.
I don't know why the garbage truck can't get down through there.
They've worked it out.
They worked it out.
They worked it out. I'm sorry, Wade.
I'm sure I'll get you an update on the schedule for it. So.
Madam Chairman, if I can ask one more thing?
You can.
Over on the Crane's Nest Bridge that was rebuilt here a few years ago?
Mm-hmm.
I'm having people to ask me, even though I don't even know whose district that's in. It's probably Clintwood District. Uh, the bump coming as you.
The approach coming on to it?
Yeah. If that might can have some paving to make that a little bit smoother as to hit that hump.
Okay. We'll, we'll look at it and see if it's something that's art, that should be on the maintenance division or the bridge. or the bridge division and the appropriate person will, will get it addressed for you.
I know what you're talking about, but every time you hit that, that little bump right there, it's 83 East.
I'm telling you, if I was doing about 25 or 30, it'd probably all right. But if you hit it 55, 60, you shoot up over it.
Mr. Thacker has another question.
Yes, sir.
How about the, uh, other place we looked at that was ponded near the church?
That, that's going to kind of be a similar issue. Uh, you know, all of those, by looking at the plans that we've got from when that road was constructed in there, all of those pipes were originally outloaded through just like a regular ditch or something. And I can bring the, the plans and show you what the plans are showing. And if, unfortunately, if, if we don't have an easement when those plans were built, then it, it would be on the private property owner once it, once it goes beyond state right away.
We've got to do something with that pond down there. I mean, people wash their cars and they come through there and the water's two foot deep on the side of the road and they're having to drive through it. I mean, I don't, I don't know, we're, we're going to have to do something. I mean, it's, it's been a problem for years upon years upon years. And it's, it's, it's discouraging when you've got a detail shop rather than road and then you come down through there three days after it rains and you got to drive through a puddle of mud and water.
I mean, I walked it with you, I understand. It's, it's really bad too there, so.
Hayside, it sounded like districts are very discouraged with that problem that's not being repaired. We've got to do something. I mean, we have to have meeting after meeting after meeting or whatever. We've got to do something with it because it's, I hear more complaints about that than anything else in my district.
Well, if you'd like to call me tomorrow, maybe we can set up another meeting then to speak with the bank and maybe.
Appreciate it.
Okay. We'll only help you any way I can.
Mr. Belcher, I appreciate you coming. I appreciate what you do for my district and every time I call, you're so helpful. I've had to call Alan also. He's always very helpful and so is Dave. And I appreciate what y'all do for my district. And for the quick response that you do.
Thank you for your very response.
Thank, thank you very much.
Sorry, Jake, smooth style.
Yeah.
That, that's okay.
Madam Chair, I've got one more question, just kind of get it on the record.
Go ahead.
The signage from, for the trucks coming through Lake Road from the delivery trucks, the tractor trailer trucks.
Yeah, like, like we discussed, uh, when, when we met there the other day. Yeah, that issue has been brought up to the Traffic Engineering Division in Bristol. So they are looking at adding the signage there and stuff, uh, because the issue was brought up with Mr. Thacker on, on the Hayside end where they're going up 63 and cutting across Cal Path. So that, that, after I spoke with him, I actually passed that on to Traffic Engineering in Bristol. So once I hear something back from them, I'll, I'll let you know. And if, if they do put up the sign, that's going to be another case where it's a specially worded sign that's going to have to be made in Richmond and shipped down to us. So that, that's where it's got different route numbers and stuff on it, that's not going to be something they would keep in stock.
Yeah, yeah, we would need two, one on each end.
Yeah.
Keep trucks from traveling either direction, so.
We've had two hung up on Rock House.
Oh, really?
And one of them, a little county road all the way down, you know, where that slide is down there?
Yeah.
We've had them hung up down there. Or they go, the GPS takes them the wrong direction.
That's what I was explaining to Mr. Hall the other day. It's a major issue all, all over our four counties. We have places like that and we've tried signage. We've tried all kinds of different things, putting up flashing billboards and they just drive and don't pay attention to it.
Now, you did say you had like, uh, somebody that, my, no, uh, the GPS companies?
I said I could reach out and see if, uh, see if I can find, um, uh, somebody that has a contact with that. We did have somebody one time that was able to help us get something switched on a work zone on, on Google Maps. But I, I don't know if, if they could get it cut out just for tractor trailers or something, but that isn't a route I'm pursuing for you.
Yeah, yeah, if you can get that contact.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's good to see you guys here.
Thank you, Wade.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, our next thing on the list is Davenport. Thank you for being patient with us also.
No worries, no worries.
And also thank you for lunch on that, that we were in Richmond. Thank you very much.
And my name is Roland Kooch. It's good to see you again. I'm from Davenport and Company in Richmond, Virginia. Uh, my colleague David Rose and I, David's been down here many times as well. Uh, I've had the honor of working with the county for over two decades with respect to a variety of topics. And we're pleased to be here tonight to talk about the proposed financial policy guidelines that we've been engaged, uh, by the county to take a look at and, uh, provide some recommendations in, in the development and for your consideration for adoption tonight. Uh, you should have in front of you, um, the, the actual document itself, the proposed document, which is a Word document. I'm not going to go through that, but that's more detail in terms of, of, um, of the actual write-up of the policies and, and exactly word for word what they say. I'm going to go through the, the PowerPoint slide deck, uh, for you and walk through the, the key, the key pages with respect to this. Uh, there's a lot of information in here as well. I mean, when we, I looked at this and trying to think about how brief or I'm trying to summarize the document itself, it's still 30 pages. So trying to think about a summary, I'm going to hit the highlights of this, uh, not reading everything word for word, but like to talk to you about exactly what went into the background of the formulation of these, uh, what we do, uh, our profession in terms of municipal advisory work. We work with local governments like Dickinson County all across the Commonwealth and even outside the Commonwealth and a variety of other states as well in helping look at financial policies for consideration as, as they are considered a best practice for local governments in terms of fiscal management and making sure that, um, good stewardship of the county outlives not just one board, but really goes from board to board throughout the future and, and stands the test of time. Um, on page two, just a couple of key highlights here. Um, what we've done is we've looked and developed a proposed financial policy guidelines. Uh, in looking at peer comparative group, um, the peer comparative group we really analyzed here is those Southwest Virginia local, localities in the VAKE regions down here. There's a 13 additional counties in addition to Dickinson County that we've looked at in terms of numbers and metrics when it comes to, uh, fund balance as well as debt management. Um, a lot of the policy metrics and analysis you're going to see here in this document really speaks to those two pieces. They're very critical and important pieces of, of financial policies. But the policy document itself really gets into, uh, and putting into, into words and a formal practice of what the, of the county has been doing for years, which is maintaining and, and adopting good, solid and structurally balanced budgets and really enhancing its fund balance over time. Um, those effective policies, those policies really work as effective, uh, management to the county, uh, year over year. On page three, um, again, just highlighting the, uh, implementation of these proposed financial policy guidelines are in keeping with best practices and sound fiscal management. Um, the policies are, are, should be considered a living document. They're a document that's looked at every year as you go through the budget process, as you look at your financials that are audited after every year to see where the county stands and how it performed versus this budget. So it really is designed to work in conjunction with, um, year-over-year budgeting practices and, and fiscal stewardship. On the next section, um, slot, pages five and six, you can see the, the peer group that we looked at here and really focused in on, uh, the Virginia County peers or those counties in the VAKE regions 12 and 13. That is the Southwest Virginia area. And you can see on page six, the 13 of the local governments that we, we benchmark in addition to, uh, as we looked at Dickinson County's numbers as well. So with that, I'll, I'll turn to the next sort of section, which is the financial policies and really trying to give you a highlight of each section of this document that you have. It's, it's really a, a, a pretty nice document that really gets into the nice verbiage and the, and the actual descriptions of, of the approach. But really the, the financial policies, uh, section one is designed to give you, um, a, a overall guidance and with respect to policy implementation and the goals and objectives of the policies. Um, really the, uh, they're designed to provide a framework for the, for the guidance of financial decisions that really flow into budgeting process and ultimately the results that you see on the audit uh, after the end of every fiscal year. The approach, um, includes those objectives really to promote fiscal stability and health, really take into account a big picture of the, of the county as well as, as looking forward. What you'll see and hear, one of the things that are, that are, that is, uh, is new in addition to that is the implementation of and, and development of a five-year capital improvement plan. One of those things that, um, a lot of well, well-managed local governments really have is, is really planning out those capital improvements and what those capital improvements may have in terms of impacts on the local government on an annual budget, uh, annual budgetary basis as well. Um, what I mean by that is, let's say you have a, um, an example of that is maybe a, a plan to, uh, replace capital vehicle, um, vehicles through either a lease or pay-as-you-go in terms of funding from equity over a five-year plan. Uh, there could be a capital improvement on a building that comes out in years two, three, four, or five. You know, things like that to think about how those may impact your budgeting on a, on a going-forward basis. So a capital improvement plan is part of the policies we're think, we're, um, we're proposing here that will really kind of flow into the overall annual budgeting process and ultimately, um, have a roadmap for the county going forward. Um, and as I've, as I've said earlier, part of the, the key thing here and takeaway here is that there's a review aspect of these policies. The policies should be looked at on an annual basis in, in connection with the budgeting and thinking about the next fiscal year and fiscal years thereafter. How are, how are our debt management policies really resulting with respect to, um, guiding our, our decisions with that, with respect to debt if needed? Uh, or how are, how is the fund balance policy tracking and how are we, how are we tracking with respect to the fund balance policy in connection with that as well? As we think about, um, financial stewardship going forward, those, those are things that will evolve over time and they'll continue to change because they're, they're in part based on, um, the key, key pieces are based on the annual budgeting process as well. Section two, uh, speaks to fund balance and reserves. The county has had a recent track record here of, of developing fun, good fund balance position and reserve position. Um, this, this talks about the, um, the actual classifications of fund balance in accordance with the general accepted accounting principles. But what we're talking about here is really focusing in on unassigned fund balance or the fund balance that truly is the, the county's reserves. And with respect to that, there may be an element of a committed fund balance for perhaps a budget stabilization fund would fall into that category. We're proposing an element of that as well. Um, I, I can remember, um, back several years, probably going back a decade, where the county didn't have fund balance and it's fortunate enough to, to be, build itself back into this position as well. An important aspect of having good fund balance is, is also demonstrating credit worthiness. That is a savings account for emergency operation, emergency needs, but also to maintain annual, um, cash flow in terms of throughout the year. Um, we all know that, uh, tax collections come in at various points in time. They're not monthly, they're not routine. They, they're coming in at different, specific points in time. Whereas a lot of expenditures may be more on a routine basis. When we look at the biggest part of the county's expenditures are probably on a more routine basis. So the, the, the concept of fund balance and good fund balance is to maintain the ability to cash flow the revenues and expenses without having to borrow on an interim basis just to meet, you know, a monthly expenditure that's coming up. So there was a day we can remember when that was, that was critical, of critical importance and very difficult for the, for the county. Um, and some local governments who've gotten into trouble really had to work to get back out of that by building up fund balance that, that can maintain that sort of cash flow. So on the next page, on page 11, we provided a five-year trend analysis in, in looking at the actual unassigned fund balance. And you could see as we move from 2018 to 2020, 2022, the fund balance as of FY '22 stands at, at its highest point to date. And we've also measured the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of general fund revenue. One, one of the fund balance policies that we're going to look at here, or the fund balance policy we're going to look at here, in addition to that, is going to consist of two pieces, both of which are measured as a percentage of general fund revenue. The idea there is as budget evolves over time, eventually the budget, as it normally grows year after year and things increase over time, um, the concept is we want that fund balance to be able to grow with and be a relative uniform percentage of the budget. And that, from our perspective and from general prac, best practices perspective, GFOA, rating agencies, uh, even VRA, uh, when they, when they fund you, asks about this as well. It's an important concept. Um, Virginia Resources Authority is the Commonwealth of Virginia's primary, what we'll call bond bank to provide local governments access to capital funding. So in addition to that, um, this is an important concept that if we're trying to obtain bank loans, if we need to obtain a bank loan for any particular reason, fund balance is a critical component as well. Um, as I've said, going back a decade or so or more, at a point in time where the county really didn't have this, this kind of fund balance, um, there were banks, there were essentially almost no banks that would be willing to lend on the Ridgeview High School, Middle School, High School construction project, which was, which was a very difficult process to get implemented without bank participation. So it's important to have a good fund balance and good fund balance policy. Um, you can see here, I think the point I want to note is that as of 2022, the number, the fund balance as a percentage of general fund revenues is 29%. Um, so you can see that number there. Um, that's a number that, as we look on page 12, what we're proposing is that, um, the fund, unassigned fund balance be targeted at a level of about 20%. 20% of the general fund revenues. Um, that's a good number. Generally speaking, 17% is what we'll consider a kind of a starting point for best practices. That's about two months' worth of, of, uh, revenues or two months' worth of budgeted expenditures, however you want to look at it on a balanced budget. But 17% is generally the trend line for a good starting point. We think the 20% given where the county is, is a good benchmark for that, uh, initial unassigned fund balance target. In addition to that, we are also proposing or recommending a proposed budget stabilization fund. This is the 5% number, uh, in addition to that. So the two combined reserves would total approximately 25%. Now, budget stabilization fund is the fund that you would look at in, in circumstances, for example, of the years where we had the COVID impact. If there's a unforeseen circumstance like that, the budget stabilization fund is there to help you mitigate that in terms of, of budget planning going forward or if you have to dip into these reserves, that budget stabilization fund sort of provides that first line of defense. Then, um, and then to the extent needed, the, the unassigned fund balance would, would be a backstop there. But the idea there is that unassigned fund balance truly is designed to help you cash flow and really be a, um, be a fund balance there that's for truly unforeseen circumstances over and above the budget stabilization fund. If we look at this, um, again, that's about 25% of the, uh, of the 2022 revenue, of, of the general fund revenues, approximately about eight and a half million of the total 9.9 that's, as of FY '22, would be what we'll call the reserves in terms of that. Page 13 just shows you a little more details in terms of on the right-hand side of the page, what this, what the current, uh, reserves as of 2022, unassigned fund balance looks like versus the revenues. If we, if we look at these proposed policies, you could see how they break down in terms of unassigned fund balance policy of 20%, the budget stabilization fund of, of 5%. Then anything over, over that is what we'll call, um, unassigned fund balance. That's not, that's in excess of the policy that can be used for one-time purposes or, um, as needed by the, by the county. Now, as we've talked about, one of the things in reviewing these on a year-to-year basis, as the budget evolves over time, say the budget goes up or, you know, um, if, if it does take a, a turn and it goes down, you know, due to different changes in the, in the general fund, if that were to occur, then that number, that 20% would also move up and. that were to occur, then that number, that 20%, would also move up and down with the budget as well. And that's the goal, is to keep that a relative constant ratio with respect to the revenues to be able to be there as reserves for the county. Page 14 just shows you graphically how that would be comprised and how that would look in terms of the budget stabilization fund as well as the unassigned fund balance. And again, anything over and above that 25% target level would be considered a fund balance in excess that could be used technically by the local government for discretionary purposes or one-time purposes. Not intended to be used, as we get later in this policy document, it's not intended to be used to support operating expenses that are routine and recurring. That's where we technically wouldn't have a structurally balanced budget from that perspective. So on page 15, just to look at where the percentages stack up, and again, in addition to, or in comparison to, both rating agency, and that's national credit rating agencies, and looking at the metrics there, you could see that in looking at the 25% target, that would put you right between the, what we'll call the moderate level and the strong level. That is, the A-rated level and the double A-rated level. Just to remind everybody and kind of just talk about the rating categories, triple A level is the strongest level that's out there by the rating agencies. Double A is strong. A is considered moderate in terms of these levels. Local governments typically, for the most part, in the Commonwealth are, tend to be on the higher-rated side. Commonwealth of Virginia has a lot of conservatively managed and well-managed governments. There are a lot of double A rated credits, and you can see how they kind of balance out and would fall into the fund balance categories there. Now, if you look at on the right-hand side of the page, you can see the comparison with the 13 other local governments here with respect to fund balance as a percentage of revenues. And that's not a typo. With County has a very strong fund balance. They have routinely managed that very strongly. Now, if you look at the southwest Virginia peer median, it's roughly in the 35% to 40% range. The 25% would stack you right slightly below that median, but you can see that it does definitely put you in the A to double A range from Moody's perspective as well. We think that's a very good range to be in. Again, it's slightly north of the 17%, which is what we'll call the minimum starting point for fund balance reserves, which is about two months of reserves. The next section, section three, well, actually sections three and section four, not going to really go into a lot of detail. We put a graph here just to show you graphically how the revenues are comprised in terms of categories, other local taxes, general property taxes, and intergovernmental revenues being the largest components. And if you look at it, they're almost equally balanced there. So when you think about your revenue sources, they're not heavily weighted towards one particular component or not. You know, we've seen local governments in other, not particularly in Virginia, but we've seen outside of Virginia where some of the general property taxes or other local taxes may be 50, 60, 70% of the budget, and that puts you at a high degree of exposure. Here, we've got kind of a third, 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 when you think about it. So there's a balance here with respect to it. The key point here that we wanted to take and wanted to strive is that, looking at the diversified mix of revenues, to the extent that we can balance that out between the other local taxes and the general property taxes, intergovernmental comes from the Commonwealth, so that's really not under our discretion, but to the extent we can not heavily rely on one of these categories, the other, that's a key, sort of a key driver here or a theme. And sometimes, you know, the goal is to be that way, but sometimes there are unforeseen circumstances that may shift that around. But the key thing here that we wanted to stress is that revenues, one, set at realistic levels. We don't want to be too conservative and kind of undershoot that. That kind of puts a strain on the expenditure side or the services side. But then we don't want to be too aggressive and then, at the end of the day, have revenues that are underneath what we budgeted at the end of the day and having a shortfall. So it's a fine balance with respect to that. The goal there is to always strive for and really structure budgets that are structurally balanced or implement budgets that are structurally balanced. That is, one-time revenues really should be left out of budgeting for recurring needs. That is, you know, fund balance carryovers or designed to help offset, you know, revenue losses. While we do have the budget stabilization fund that's there for that, it's intended to be there, you know, and to be used for emergency circumstances such as like a pandemic environment, where we know we have a couple of years in a row of that, we can help offset that, but not designed to really offset routine recurring budgetary expenses going forward. We call that a structural balance. That's very important. That leads into, and that also really plays a large part as to how your reserves will be maintained or help grow over time as your budget grows. Expenditures, page 19. Again, this really works hand-in-hand. If you, when you look at the detailed document, it works hand-in-hand with the revenue side. And again, the ongoing expenditures, really the key point here is that one-time expenditures, and that's kind of the second bullet, are really funded with an offsetting revenue, one-time revenue source for one-time expenditure sources, with the exception of a capital reserve fund. That's a concept that we do have when there are, when there is the ability to set aside some monies for capital in a strategic manner, those monies can sometimes help be used to offset what we'll call peaks in debt service. Not routine debt service increases, but just a slight peak in a debt service from time to time. We don't, we wanted to point that out as an acceptable use of one-time monies, much in the way that they would typically be used for pay-as-you-go capital. That is to say, if you were to replace vehicles with one-time monies, that's a perfectly fine source as well. So page 21. Again, this is just putting into sort of a formal policy of what we think the county has been doing a good track record of here with the county administration. That is, you know, budgets that are structurally balanced, conservatively implemented. One of the things that are probably, that are probably be somewhat new here is taking into account a five-year capital improvement plan that you're going to see on the next several pages, but also, you know, a more formal, probably formalized message and tracking of prior year's expenditures, current year's budget and proposed budget, kind of just putting them side by side, just so we'll have a track record in saying, okay, how do these things look as we develop the budget and as the budget's implemented? On page 23, this is the capital improvement plan, the concept that we've alluded to. Local governments that we see that have had a history of what we'll call budgeting for capital needs, or they have a lot of capital needs that they really consider it over time, put into place a five-year plan. That is to say, the first year of the budget of the capital improvement plan is part of the budget, but the next four years are what's going to be planned. And part of that is also, while we think about implementing or planning for those needs, we have to identify a source for those needs as well. Then it becomes much less of a wish list, but it's more of a dedicated concept of how we're going to fund, say, vehicle replacements, I'll go back to that, or say, a roof replacement over time. Maybe it's budgeted over time to add revenues to it, to save up for it. Road improvements, if you've got to contribute to a dollar match, you know, you've got a VDOT road improvement out here that's planned in year five, you know, that hopefully they come in for a revenue sharing dollar-for-dollar, then you've got to come up with the other dollar. So that's part of the overall capital improvement planning concept. Just kind of laying that out with the budget and looking at that year by year. Of course, the first year is the adopted budget, and that's what's supposed to be implemented this year. The next year, that part of the plan rolls forward and becomes part of the next year's budget. So that's the idea of the capital improvement. So looking at section seven, debt. Again, the debt is something that's used judiciously, and when used judiciously can very well be a good tool for implementing large capital improvement projects. You know, the Ridgeview combined school there, when it was developed, and when we looked at that, the county was fortunate to have an Army Corps of Engineers grant agreement for that, as well as for the new elementary school. But we did need to use some debt on that because the grants weren't coming in on a routine basis. They were coming in from federal government. There was no guarantee when they were going to come in, so we had to use debt on an interim financing basis. And that was the approach that we did there. One of the unique things is we did have some interim financing on that, but we also had to use some long-term financing to kind of substitute for interim financing, just by the nature of the county's finances at the time. So what this debt section talks about is the types of debt that the county may undertake and the county may think about. Revenue anticipation notes, we might hear about those from time to time. Those are short-term notes that are routinely looked at as not a generally accepted or good practice, but can be used in extraordinary circumstances. It's designed to cash flow within the fiscal year. And they're paid off with tax revenues within the fiscal year. That effectively means if you have to use a revenue anticipation note, then you don't have enough fund balance or reserves to help manage your cash flows throughout the year. So one of those things that the county has definitely moved away from is that practice that was a decade-plus ago, when they had to think about those. Bond anticipation notes are the, or lines of credit. Those are short-term vehicles that are specifically tied to a project. And again, we used a combination of some of those when we did the Ridgeview plan of finance for that middle school and high school project. So we did use those. Some of the other aspects of this debt policy are using lease purchase or master lease obligations, to the extent that a large vehicle needs to be replaced. That's an acceptable way of financing a vehicle if paying for it in cash is difficult in a particular year. And then really, long-term borrowing is ultimately designed to be used for capital improvements, long-lived assets. That's where we get into really buildings of this type or courthouse, you know, looking at long-term financing for a major capital improvement. So this debt policy really just puts into place practices that the county has really followed by over the years and really kind of formalizes that practice. It also implements, on the next several pages, policy targets. This on page 26 is a snapshot of the county's debt profile. You can see the principal and interest over years until, year by year until maturity. And again, these are debt instruments that have been used to finance major capital assets, bricks and mortar. If we look on page 27, the policy targets we're proposing to, for the board's consideration, are what we call two key policy targets. That is, debt as a measure of your tax base. You can see that the debt of Dickinson County as a percentage of its tax base is under 1%. And the policy target we're talking about here is implementing a not-to-exceed target of 3%. We're not saying that you go out and borrow 3%, but that's a, that is a target that is a generally accepted, strong level of, strong policy target level for debt not to exceed. Now, you can see that over time, as your debt gets paid off, your debt as a percentage of assessed value is definitely going to decrease over time. But this policy target gives you the flexibility, should you have to or think about something that changes over time, implement that. You've got the ability to do that within a policy that's a sound measurement based on credit standards. Looking on page 28, just to give you an example, the right-hand side of the page talks about credit rating metrics and looking at debt as a percentage of tax base. Standard and Poor's, one of the other major credit rating agencies, really looks at a positive rating adjustment. That is to say, they gave credit to local governments that have debt as a percentage of assessed value that's 3% or lower. So that's where we're saying this is a very sound policy target. And you could see on the right-hand side of the page, when we look at Dickinson County relative to southwest Virginia local governments, most of them, by and large, are below that 3% target. Some of them are really, is a function of either low debt or a much larger tax base in combination. So you could see that as well. Page 29, this is the second component to the debt policies. That is a ratio or a metric. This is debt service versus budgeted expenditures. When we look at this, this really speaks to the question of, can we afford this? Can we, how much of our budget are we pushing towards a fixed payment? Or you might say, how much is your mortgage payment with respect to your debt? In looking at this ratio, we can see that the county's ratio is below the 4% target, and it continues to drop as the debt service payments drop. The industry standard benchmark is that this policy ratio should not be above 10%. 10% is a widely accepted general best practice. Now, we have other local governments that say, okay, I'm never going to get there. Let me set the bar at maybe 8%. That's perfectly reasonable as well. One of the things we want to make sure is that this policy fits within the county's anticipated needs, and we think it does, more than does that. But as things evolve over time, as we think about these policies over time, you know, this is something, as we look at the policies on an annual basis, revisiting this and just seeing where we benchmark and where we set and where we pencil out is an important concept. And here, when we look at the projections, we can see that the county is well within this policy and is really strongly favorable with respect to this ratio. On page 30, you can see, again, we're benchmarking this policy. If you look at the rating considerations on the left-hand side of the page, anything between 8 and 15% is considered strong. Anything 8% and lower is considered very strong. And you can also see that on the right-hand side of the page, again, benchmarking against the peers, Dickinson County is slightly above the median, but again, that is projected to go down over time as your debt gets paid off. The third component here really speaks to what we're calling fixed costs versus expenditures. This is a measurement of the county's, not only debt service, which is considered a fixed cost, once you enter into some debt, you've got this fixed payment that you're going to make over time. But the other aspect of it is pension costs and benefit costs. And when we look at the pension and benefit costs that are built into the other aspects of the budget, you can see that when you layer those on, those are in the 10% range, if not a little bit lower than that, and they tend to decrease over time. But here, a generally accepted practice or generally accepted ratio is in the 17% range. That is to say, when you think about your debt service, as well as your benefits and pension costs with respect to VRS, how do those stack up and how do those measure against your total budget? Here, we're seeing it in the 10% range, which is well below the 17% kind of benchmark So the last several sections are really more, until we get to the investment piece, are really more just sort of summarizing what kind of debts we can, the county can avail itself of. Of course, general obligation bonds, subject to referendum, except for Virginia Public Schools Authority, when you go through VPS. When you go through VPSA, that's a statutory GO. But lease revenue bonds are definitely an appropriate form of debt. That's a moral obligation or a subject appropriation debt. Then, of course, we have revenue bonds, state programs such as Virginia Resource Authority or USDA, funding sources that can be used. The policy speaks to and gets into when to use debt and what types of debt issuances you could use. Again, these are fairly standard approaches and the county has gone to and looked at a variety of these approaches over time. One of the things to think about is refinancing for savings. Generally, we want to shoot for a target of 3%. So that's going to be a piece there is a 3% present value savings target as part of the policy. So the next section, I think, is new, going to be new. It's more of an investment and management approach. And working with the county on this and trying to develop some plans. Because as you're all aware, the whole interest rate reinvestment scene has changed. The whole rates environment has changed since the Fed started raising rates more than a year ago. And short-term rates have moved back to what we'll call historic levels, if not exceeding historic levels, in relationship to what we'll call long-term debt repayment rates. That is to say, the county could potentially earn through LGIP, for example, which is the Local Government Investment Pool, which all local governments can participate in, can earn upwards in excess of 5% today. Whereas if you were to borrow for a 20-year bricks and mortar improvement, you'd be paying in the 4% range. So that's where we're standing in today's market. This investment management approach and policy is really designed to put into perspective, put into a policy of the county's approach to managing its funds now that the ability to invest can really provide some benefit and help enhance the budget based on today's environment. So this, of course, the investments are directed by the treasurer, but what we're trying to do here is put into place a very good policy approach and kind of methodical approach to reviewing these going forward. On page 36, the key approach, the key tenets of the investment policy is safety of principal, first and foremost. We don't want to do anything risky or put anything in something that really locks up the county's funds beyond a certain point in time that you would need it. That really ties into number two, which is liquidity. You always have to have enough of that reserve or enough of the county's fund balance or actual funds to be able to pay the bills. As new revenues come in, you've got to pay the bills that go out as well. You don't want to tie up everything in that, in an investment that you'd have to sell and potentially take a loss on. And then third, yield. As we've said today, the yield on pretty much overnight funds is in excess of 5%. In a normal market, it's typically the longer you invest the money, the higher the yield would be. So your short-term monies would be lower than the long term. But today, we've got the inverse of that. What this policy and this approach is designed to do is ultimately position you at the point in time where that yield curve switches back. We do think eventually it's going to switch back where your short-term monies are going to earn less than your long-term invested monies. So on page 37, the investment management approach really establishes an investment committee. Again, the Board of Supervisors is overseeing everything from this perspective. The investment committee will be a sub-function and work underneath the Board of Supervisors and be composed of the county treasurer, county administrator, and one member of the Board of Supervisors. The approach here is the, obviously, the county treasurer and her staff would have the ability to really see that from a day-to-day, but they would be working from an investment plan that would help maximize the county's earnings. And all of that would be reporting through the investment committee and ultimately to the board from that perspective. Part of that may involve, at some point on page 38, a competitive selection of securities. And when we're talking about securities, we'll show what is in the policy is what's a permitted security. Most of the, if not almost all of the clients that we work with in this type of approach either use the Local Government Investment Pool or look at United States Treasuries or selected United States agencies that are non-callable. Those are probably the safest and most secure investments. Some also get into certificates of deposit as well as commercial paper. Those are what we'll call other elements of investments that are stealth secure, but you don't, you want to diversify and not put all your eggs in one basket when it comes to CDs or any other thing that's not a U.S. Treasury or an agency. So on the next page, on page 39, this spells out how much of the county's funds could be invested in any sort of these identified securities. Of course, the carve-outs are Virginia Local Government Investment Pool, State Non-Amburchage Program. Those are considered diversified investments in and of themselves and run in a well-managed manner by the common ones managed by the Commonwealth Treasury Board and the other ones managed by the State Non-Amburchage Program, PFM's doing that one. Those are widely considered very strong and very good investments for both county funds as well as operating funds as well as bond funds. But those are carved out. You're not limited to how much you can put into those. But what we have here is really kind of a menu of what could be invested and how much could, from a best practice standpoint, could be put in any one of these types of investments. So for example, just to share with you here, U.S. Treasury Securities and Agencies, it's fine to perfectly put all of your money into United States Treasuries and selected non-callable agencies that are, that are certain federal agencies there that are considered safe and secure. This is a perfectly accepted practice. But when we get into specific instruments that could be considered a particular bank instrument or a type of mutual fund or a corporate commercial paper, we want to start to limit those, so to limit your exposure to the type of risk into those. So that's how these are scaled down with respect to that. So that was the last sort of critical new piece here. The next couple of pages really just kind of speak to current practices and just putting them into formal guidelines. Financial reporting, again, that's really something the county does on a regime basis as well. That's all local governments are required to do that. Maintain a financial audit that conforms with generally accepted accounting principles and GASB. And then accounting records sufficient to provide to be able to be audited. Economic development, the last section here is really trying to put into place an approach to economic development that really puts into a process here that if the board has to, or if the county is asked to contribute to an economic development project, take an assessment of what the revenue and benefits would be relative to the contribution that might be requested. That's a cost-benefit analysis. So that's the policy that this speaks to as well. So I know I tried to be a little brief here, but it's about, hopefully, a little bit briefer than reading through the whole document itself. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any questions.
Well, basically, Dixon County looks pretty good.
Yes, it has come a long way and it's really, it's...
Due to Larry Barton's CPA experience and brains, I think what I could get, which is very limited with my brain, that looks like Dixon County's been done pretty good.
Mm-hmm. And this policy is designed to...
That doesn't mean we start spending it like our crazy.
Policies are designed to keep you in that trajectory.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have anything to say?
No, he covered everything well.
No. He knows his business.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
And we'll move on. Before we go on, we started kind of rushed this afternoon. I forgot to recognize that all of my board members are here, as well as our county administrator, Mr. Barton, and I went Teresa to put in the records, and our county attorney, Will Sturgill, and also our economic developer, Dana Cronkite is here, and our clerk, Teresa Law, and our IT person, Adam Mullins. And I forgot to do that when we started and I went in the rec...
The Ridgeview girls won.
Congratulations.
During the final four.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is AA, and it's the adoption of the financial policy that Mr. Coop has gone over.
I make a motion to adopt that policy.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. I'm going to take a roll call on this also. I like roll calls, as you all noticed. Oh, it's Ms. Kaiser first.
Yes.
And Mr. Hall.
Yes.
And Ms. Sless.
Yes.
And Mr. Thack.
Yes.
And yes, also. And then we need, the next thing on the agenda is B, to appoint a investment committee. And it consists of Mr. Barton, I'll go back, the treasurer. And then we need one from the board. So we need somebody to make a motion for someone on the board. And don't point me because I don't know anything about it. I just know how to spend money.
I'll nominate Peggy Kaiser to be on that.
I'll second.
She's done counting in for, what was it, 38 years?
Well, I thought Mr. Hall would be one also because he does investments himself and he knows the ropes of investment.
I didn't know he did.
Did you know he did?
I didn't know that, no.
Yeah, he did.
He invests in stocks and stuff.
I do.
Every day.
You're kidding. I didn't know that.
So we have a motion on the floor to appoint Ms. Kaiser. Do we have another motion? Okay. I'll take a roll call on these. We have a motion and a second, correct, to appoint Ms. Kaiser. Ms. Sless.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, Richard did.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Richard seconded it.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes.
And Mr. Thack.
Yes.
And Mr. Hall.
Yes.
And Ms. Kaiser.
Yes.
And Allison.
I will do my best. Chris, I didn't know you was an investment banker.
Peggy will do a fun job.
Huh?
Peggy will do a fun job.
I'll give you $100 and see if you can double it. I ain't got a hundred dollars.
Thank you for having me. All right, thank you. The next thing on the board is that we received a letter from Mr. Clarence Bud Phillips that he's resigning from the Southwest Community College Advisory Board and we need to make an appointment for the Southwest Virginia Community College Advisory Board to replace and fill out Mr. Phillips's term.
I'll nominate Ms. Allison Mullins.
Do I have a second to...
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any more motions?
I was going to make a motion for Tanya Gully.
She did send a notice today that she is interested in it. Did you make a motion, a substitute motion for that?
Yes, I will make that as a substitute motion.
I'll second your substitute motion. That, and the substitute motion's voted first, am I correct, Mr. Sturgill? Have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Tanya Gully? And I'll take a roll call vote on that one. Mr. Hall. Ms. Kaiser. And Ms. Sless.
I have nothing against Tanya, but I think that Allison would be a great person because she's from Hayside and a lot of the children go to, Hayside go to Southwest. So I have nothing against Tanya. I say no.
Mr. Thack.
I'll say no as well.
Well, I'm going to say aye because I am proud of Tanya for stepping up, being a young person, being interested in several things in the county. And I'm going to vote aye for Tanya.
Only reason I voted no is I don't represent my support.
Yeah, we can very well vote. Actually, we done voted no.
Nothing against Tanya. She's a real good girl.
I pointed Tanya to the Health Advisory Committee. Well, I made the motion. We'll say that.
Okay. We don't have to vote on the other one because that one passed. The next thing on the agenda is the Cumberland Plateau Regional Waste Management Authority Manpower Service Agreement.
I'm making a motion that we approve the 2024 manpower service agreement with the Regional Solid Waste Authority.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, have a vote in a second to adopt this policy agreement.
Madam Chair, this is unchanged from what we...
It's unchanged from the...
With that motion, can I do the number two at the same time or do them separately?
We need separate.
Okay.
I'm getting up and start my time. I got a minute. This goes with one of the items that we're coming up.
This is a new thing.
It goes with this voting thing.
Okay. Did I take a roll call on that? Did I not? Ms. Traul, how do you vote on the Cumberland Plateau Waste Management Agreement?
Yes.
Ms. Kaiser?
Yes.
Ms. Sless?
Yes.
And Mr. Thack?
Yes.
And Allison. Then the next thing on the agenda is our 2024, 2024 Manpower Service Agreement. And this is the solid waste agreement with...
I also make the motion to approve the 2024 user agreement with the Southwest, with the Regional Waste Authority, Management Authority.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second that we approve that one, Manpower Service Agreement. Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Kaiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Thack?
Yes.
And Ms. Sless?
Yes.
And Allison. And do I have two on there for the 2024 user agreement?
We did. We got them.
We got both of them, okay.
We got both of them.
Okay. And now I have a NORA resolution, a NORA precinct resolution. Right, and it's a motion for an emergency voting place for NORA since the Everton Elementary School is closed.
Right. Madam Chair, if I could explain that...
All right.
We've already taken care of that. Kayla has on that. So for the March 5th primaries, voting will occur at the McClure River Koalas. And what we have to do to make a permanent change to this would be to, we have to advertise for 45 days and then hold a public hearing. And then after that, ordinance can be approved. And Mr. Sturgill's drafted the ordinance on that, just like we had before. The precinct lines are not moving on that. The location is just going to be moved from where we tell the former Everton Elementary to the McClure River Koalas.
Okay, so we just need to make a motion to advertise this at our next meeting.
It's going to be advertised starting March 6th, except public comments. We have to leave it open for 45 days. And comment will end, public comment through April 23rd, which we are an April meeting that will actually vote on that ordinance to accept.
Okay. But the emergency thing is already being taken care of?
It's already taken care of, yes, ma'am.
All right. So I need a motion to advertise the, starting March 6th, to accept the public comments for moving the NORA precinct.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. And we have a motion and a second on the floor to have a public hearing, to advertise for a public hearing. To our regular meeting in May, is that correct?
It'll be our April meeting.
April meeting.
April, is that right?
April meeting.
23rd?
Yeah. Because it has to run for 45 days. Because it has to run for 45 days. We have a motion and a second to do the advertisement. Uh, Ms. Sless, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Thacker?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Kaiser?
Aye.
And Ms. Hall? And also. Okay, now let me see where I'm at. I have a resolution. Let me make sure I'm on right page, I am. We have a resolution to support the Virginia Opid Abatement Authority Cooperative. This is like a partnership thing, correct?
It is, yes, ma'am. Southwest Virginia Legal, A, who provides services to many of our residents here in the county, in particular those leaving drug court, to help them. Mr. Joey Carrico comes to the county often and, you know, he helps them with the different aspects when they're getting out of jail or trying to get their life back on track, help them with the things they need on, you know, getting their license back. You know, a lot of them have marital issues that they need something resolved. You know, whatever those legal issues are. And what they're doing is they're doing a joint application. Scott County will be the fiscal agent on this, and all the counties in the region are going together and they're applying for some funding from the opioid abatement authority. And they're just asking for our support on this application. We don't really have to do anything in this as a hinder our application for something that we're working on either. We can still do our own application. So we're just supporting this application because we, uh, we will benefit from this. Our citizens will.
Uh, as all of you have read, I'm not gonna read it into the records because we've all had the opportunity to read it ourselves. Uh, I need a motion to accept it or reject it.
I make a motion to accept the resolution of support for the Virginia Opid, opied...
Opied, yeah.
Opied, that's our, we say. Abatement Authority Cooperative Partnership Grant Funding.
Do I have a second?
Now I'll second.
All right. Have a motion and a second to support this. Uh, Ms. Sless, how do you vote? Mr. Thacker?
Yes.
And Ms. Kaiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Hall?
Yes.
And also. And now I'm down to the Bearpen Swimming Pool.
Oh, Deacon County Public.
It's non-IF.
It was moved. Oh, that was took out, wasn't it?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was moved. It was taken out and moved to closed session.
Madam Chair, on the proposed lease with the, uh, on the Bearpen Pool with Dickinson County Behavioral Health, I spoke with their director, Mr. Mullins, last week, and they have expressed interest in operating the pool again. Uh, not a definite that they will, but they've expressed interest. So what we talked about, this is the same lease we've used the past couple of years, which they've dated the dates in it. And if we approve this tonight, then they will have that for their board's consideration, so.
So do we want to lease the pool back to behavioral health? I think they do a wonderful job with it.
I think they've done an excellent job running it.
Yes, they do.
I make a motion that we enter into a lease with the behavioral health to operate the county pool. I second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to go into the lease with the behavioral health to run the pool this summer. Uh, Mr. Thacker, how do you vote? And Ms. Sless?
Yes.
And Ms. Kaiser? And Mr. Hall?
Aye.
And also. Okay, now we're down to the Dickerson County Fair.
Yes, ma'am. We have some members here from the fair committee with us tonight.
Flash their hearts.
Chair couldn't be here. Ms. Hutchinson couldn't be here today due to an illness, but they came and, you know, I don't know if y'all wanna come and speak, but basically what they're looking at is, you know, they made a funding request to us, I think, last month for $40,000. And, you know, and looking at our budget, where we're at and things, we were hoping to do as much as we could during the budget workshops and the budget process for next year. And in speaking with Ms. Hutchinson, you know, she said for most of the things that would work because we would have funding available July 1st. But certain things like the rides, they made commitments for the rides. They need to be making deposits on those. So they're really needing $15,000 right now, you know, as soon as we could on that, if we can make that commitment to them and get them some funding. Then the remainder of the funding we'll schedule sometime during the workshops and talk with them because we'll have to look at this year's fair plus some money to get started for the following year so we don't find ourselves back in this situation again. So during the budget workshops.
So we need a motion to give them $15,000 now to secure the rides?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make it motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And I have a motion and a second to advance them $15,000 to secure the rides for the fair. Uh, Ms. Sless, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Thacker?
Yes.
And Ms. Kaiser? And Mr. Hall? And I also. Okay, I don't have any other business, do I?
Boy.
We need a motion now to go into closed session if someone would like to make that motion to go into closed session. And we have the addition to that.
Is that under the same section code, but just number two?
Number eight, yeah, it changes to eight.
Oh, legal counsel will be A.8?
Correct.
Okay. I make a motion that we will go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711A7. Uh, Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711A7 litigation and A.8 under legal counsel.
Okay, do I have a second to go into closed session?
I think.
And do you all want a 10-minute break before we go into closed session?
Yes, I need to go back.
Okay. Uh, also, anytime you need...
Then I need a motion that we come out of closed session.
I'll make that motion that we come out of closed session.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say. Vote the usual way.
Aye.
Now, I need a certification that we only discuss those issues that we went into closed session for.
I'll make the motion that we only discuss the matters that we went into closed session for.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Have to take a roll call. Mr. Hall.
Aye.
Ms. Kaiser.
Aye.
And Mr. Thack.
Aye.
And Ms. Celeste.
Yes.
And I also. And we have no matters to discuss coming out or no motions, okay?
No matters that were discussed from closed session. However, earlier in the meeting,
I think under new business appointments, where we had a motion and then a substitute motion, you asked about voting on the substitute motion first.
Uh huh.
I said yes. However, in the past and also under Robert's Rules of Order, nominations, appointments, we vote in the order that they're nominated. Now, that does not invalidate the action as far as that goes, but I wanted to just make you all aware of that. If that causes anybody who voted in favor of whoever.
It was Tony.
What, yeah. If that causes anybody to want to reconsider that and they voted in favor of the person who got the appointment, then they can make a motion here at that meeting in order to reconsider that. But at the same time, as of right now, that action is valid. But I did want to point that out as far as.
So, why must you don't do the substitute motion?
Richard made the motion. I seconded.
And then there was a substitute motion made. And so technically, the person's name that was listed first was the one who was supposed to be voted on first.
So, we can change our vote if we want to?
What I'm saying is, is if the person who, if there's a person who voted yes for the person who got the appointment would want to reconsider their vote in light of that, then they can do that. But again, I just wanted to point that out of, from a rules of order standpoint. Okay?
I always thought the substitute motion was first, but with appointments, you take the first.
Well, the nominations are first.
Well, I don't want to change my vote.
Okay.
He said that. I mean, I made the motion and I voted for, but either one doesn't matter. It was me. For as that goes, you know. So.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out from a procedural because that's not the way we've been doing the nominations. And that's technically the way Robert's Rules of Order is, is that it's taken into account in the order that they're nominated.
I think I would like to change mine. I think Allison will do a great job.
Do what? What'd they say?
It'd be, he'd have to make a motion to reconsider.
I make a motion to reconsider. The nomination for Southwest.
The person that made the motion first have to do it again or not?
No, no. We take it into account the order they're receiving.
Okay.
Richard made the motion.
Make a motion to reconsider Allison.
No, Chris made the motion.
Chris made the motion to reconsider. Did you?
I see.
And Richard? Sometimes I can't hear you. I can hear them either.
I'll speak.
I always had that problem down on that end too. I have a motion and a second to reconsider how you voted. Is that my motion?
Yes, to reconsider the nomination that was previously placed.
Okay.
So, does that mean we're voting for the first nomination? Okay.
We're gonna, has there been a vote on that? I've heard the motion.
No, we have.
So, we vote on that, then we go back to the original and take it into the, in the order that they were.
I say yes.
So, my motion is that we're, I have a motion and a second to rescind the vote that we made for the appointment of Southwest Community College. Am I correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Ms. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaiser?
Aye.
And Ms. Sless? And I vote no.
Okay. And now, we take the nominations again as far as the way.
I nominate Allison. Mo and Oakwin.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Allison Oakwin. Now, can you do another motion?
You do nominations.
You can do another nomination for it. Correct.
Well, I make a motion that we go ahead and leave Tanya Gully on there that we voted for.
And I can second that because I made the motion for her before, so.
Now, you have to vote in order, huh?
Yeah, we have to vote on the first one first.
Okay, the first one is, I'll take a roll call. Rhonda, who are you voting for?
Allison.
Who are you voting for? Mr. Thacker?
Allison.
And Ms. Kaiser?
Tanya.
And Ms. Hall?
Allison.
I'm voting for Allison also. I'm not Allison. I'm voting for Tanya. I'm sorry. I'm voting for Tanya. Not Allison. My vote for Allison is absolutely good though.
So, that carries. She's the nominee for that Southwest College. Okay.
Okay.
And it's not that I have anything against Allison Oakwin holding that position, but I stayed with my original vote.
I did too, because if you don't stay with your original vote, I don't know. I just don't.
Well, I think they're both fabulous people. I just think Allison.
Why, yeah.
Better suited for that position.
Think Allison is on that end of the county to go. And Hayside is in the Southwest College District. I understand that. And Jamie Hackney is now the, when is he in South High?
He's the dean over there.
Yeah, and she can work in close contact with Jamie.
I think that'll work out great.
It's down to supervisor's comment.
Okay, I'm down to supervisor's comment. Ms. Sless, I'll start with you since it takes you 30 minutes.
You're gonna give me three minutes?
No, I'm giving you five.
Well, I just want to congratulate the scholastic team at Ridgeview High School. They won the championship. The head coaches Adrian White, Sisson, Holden, Dingus. The members are David Farmer, Landon Couch, Connor Kaiser, Daniel Greer, Sophie Greer, Alexi, Alexis, Stalard, Joel Castling, Alex Smith. And I'm so proud of them and I'm proud of the girls. They're in the final four.
In basketball?
In basketball. They are in the final. They beat Floyd Kelly this evening, so they're in the final four. Ridgeview's coming right up to the front, boys. And girls.
Mr. Becker, you got a message.
Hey, congratulations as well. I also want to thank B-Dot for coming and being here tonight. Give us the information they gave us and all the, as responsive they've been to all my requests. I just want to give them a huge thanks.
Oh, I'm just glad, long meeting. Glad that Food City is ready to open their doors tomorrow. I know there's a lot of citizens is not very happy with that, but it's revenue, it's jobs. And for four years during COVID, not one citizen in the county could go to Food City and do a food pickup like you could do everywhere else. And a lot of people went out of the county and used that. Yeah, used curbside service at other businesses because they couldn't get that here. And I'm glad to see our citizens being offered that now. And just glad we have had a okay meeting tonight. Ready to go home.
Ms. Drew Hall?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
I would like to say I always congratulate our students when they do well. I always send them congratulations and I'm very pleased with them. I'm pleased with our beautiful schools that we have accomplished. And also, I'd like to compliment two of my neighbors. Benny Kennedy and his wife, Zelda, picked up trash yesterday and day before yesterday, I think, in our neighborhood, and it was unreal how many bags that they got. And I'd like to thank them for what they do in our community for picking up all that trash. And I mean, they don't have to do it, but they do it as a community endeavor. And I'd like to thank them for what they've done.
It's unreal how much trash is through McClure again.
That county.
It's all over everywhere.
Yeah, they just picked it up there.
County Rich is bad, buddy. B-Dot.
Two weeks ago or less.
He's all the way up through there.
I think that's all the comments. Now, I need a motion to adjourn.
I so motion.
Say.
All in favor?
Yes.